Thank you. Good morning. We will call this Douglas County Board of Commissioners work session to order. Today is Monday, April 20th, 2020. First of all, I would like, if you could, please mute your phone if you're not in the, if you're not speaking. And also, we only have an opportunity for four people to be on the camera at one time. So I ask that you turn your camera off if you're not speaking. With that being said, I would move to public comment to, first of all, I'd like to say to the citizens of Douglas County, this meeting is being held under the Open Meetings Act, and we under emergency orders. And unfortunately, I won't be able to take your public comments today. However, I encourage you to please email your concerns to your individual district commissioners, or Mark Teal, or myself. Please feel free to email your concerns to us, and we will respond to you and take this matter under advisement immediately. Board of Commissioners, to, first of all, welcome Board of Commissioners and also to the citizens of Douglas County. Thank you so much for joining our virtual meeting. Again, this is, we are in our fourth week of this COVID-19 situation, and I hope and pray that everyone is doing fine, or doing great amidst this coronavirus pandemic. Approval of the minutes, Board of Commissioners, please be prepared to approve the minutes accordingly tomorrow at 6:00 PM, at our 6:00 PM work, at our 6:00 PM Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to move around just a little bit so I could expedite the meeting. Board of Commissioners, I ask, when we get to our presentations, if you could just wade into the presentations, each presentation is completed, and then, please, you feel free to ask questions. I ask that we limit our questions to three minutes, and then also responses, if you have a response to a two-minute timeframe. Thank you so much. I'm going to move just a little bit around. I want to move to the business item today, which is tab number seven, and it's Authorization for the Chairman to Sign the Fiscal Designation Form for the Family Connection Partnership Grant Douglas Core. Is Director King on today? Jennifer King?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Can you explain to the Board of Commissioners what this is, please? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. This is the annual registration where we sign off that we are continuing to be the fiscal agent for Core, for the state.
Okay. Any questions from the Board?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Vice Chairman Robinson, yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam King, question for you, for the public's sake, it has been some time. So what is Core, and what is its function? As a matter of fact, I was in a conversation recently regarding its function here locally. So can you just back up? Because I don't want to let it be marginalized, but in fact, assuming everybody understands what this is. As you know, a lot of people are beginning to watch these meetings because of us sheltering in place. So while historically, the people who typically were active were a handful, there's a lot more people involved. So can you just take a little bit of time, explain what Core is? Because I think it's important.
Yes. Core is our county family connections group. They work to kind of identify local resources. They meet once a month throughout the year to do kind of specific presentations as far as different community resources and partners in Douglas County, to talk about, you know, what's out there, what are some new things, what are things that are working? If they're not working, what can we do to kind of assist with that?
Okay. My, so let me extend that a little bit further. So one of the deliverables, and just correct me if I missed this, one of the deliverables is what I call the Community Resource Guide. And it was something that was published that became invaluable. It's like a pamphlet, a booklet in essence, but it was an aggregation of all resources in the county, for one place for citizens to go, for everything from mental health to this, that. I mean, again, one more time, what is it that you're talking about, resource? What does that mean?
Well, honestly, Commissioner, you know, this time, I'm not completely sure what all they are organizing as far as resources. The Resource Guide that you're talking about was actually created here in my office in juvenile programs. Ms. Hobson does that yearly and updates that, has a resource fair every year to put that together. So I can't really say today what Core is doing as far as the resources. I am not involved in that level with them. All we are doing at this point is the fiscal agent piece.
All right. So then, last question, then, you're the fiscal agent. You're the fiscal agent, so what, you're just overseeing the budget? So what does that mean, for the public's sake? So you're the fiscal agent?
The only thing that we're required as fiscal agent to do is we accept their statements. They send in their statements every month here in my office to Ms. Hobson. And then she submits their reports for the processing of their payment from the state. We're not involved with any decision-making, and that is very clear in all the paperwork and the contracts that were prepared, that basically all we're doing is processing that for them.
Right. So I'm hearing "us" and "them." So who is Core? Who runs the day-to-day? And is there oversight? Is there a directorship? I mean, I'm, 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 we're talking about it at arm's length, but I'm like, okay, but why are we doing this? Who are they? Can you tell us that?
Amanda Bryant is the executive director. There is a board that runs Core, controls Core, and then they answer to a state representative person. As far as I know, that's, that's really all that I'm aware of. There is no oversight here from my office, other than the financial processing.
All right. Madam Chair, you?
Thank you so much. Any other questions from the Board, or move on? Thank you so much, Director King. I know that the Core accomplishes the mission through its partners by identifying the community needs, strengths, and missions, and then choosing priorities and sharing experience, knowledge, and resources to plan solutions, and collaborating to raise grant funds and coordinating existing resources around a common, a common agenda. So the purpose is certainly, I've been here in Douglas County quite a while, Core has been here, so thank you again for just bringing this information to the Board of Commissioners this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Board of Commissioners, I'm going to move on to tab number eight, Authorization to amend the Douglas Core to reflect the reversal of the FY budget cut from the state and revert back to the original service contract between Douglas County and Core, approved July 9th, 2019, and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents and amend the budget. Jennifer King?
Yes, ma'am. This, when we amended the contact, contracts, excuse me, they were cut, I believe it was $2,000 from $50,000 down to $48,000, and now the state is just giving them the $2,000 back. So it would just amend back up to $50,000.
Okay. Pretty self-explanatory. Any questions from the Board? All right. Thank you so much, Director King. Thank you. I'm going to move on to tab number nine. Tab number nine is Authorization to Accept Supplemental Funds and Emergency COVID-19 Funds in the Amount of $15,283 from the CJCC for the DUI Accountability Court and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents and amend the budget. Anita Granger, Mrs. Granger?
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioner. How are you?
Good morning.
Good to see you. So these are two supplemental grants that we had an opportunity to apply for. They come up rather quickly in the, we are now in the fourth quarter of our current grant year, and so as I saw that there was a need for some additional monies for drug testing, due to the COVID, we're doing things a little bit differently. So we asked for those supplemental funds, and they granted them to us. So I've got two different ones. One is in the amount of $8,845. The other one is in the amount of $6,438, and the total was listed on the agenda. So I just ask that you allow us to accept these funds. There are no matches. Just have to prepay, and then they will reimburse the county for the, for the expenditures.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Granger. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Geider?
Anita, now, this is for the COVID-19. This is to reimburse you for additional testing. Is that what you're saying?
Well, what we're doing with the COVID funds is we're getting portable breathalyzers for the people that are in the DUI court, so they don't have to come in for testing. They can test at home for the alcohol consumption. So that, that's what the COVID one is. The other supplemental grant is just for our regular urine screening and whatever other kind of screening that we do. We've been using patches. We've been having to do some stuff to, to keep our contact down. Obviously, we still have to have contact with folks. We are still running the Accountability Court, and so we are still having some contact with people. But mostly, we're trying to do things via video, like groups and individual sessions, stuff like that. So the COVID funds, again, they were for me to be able to get some breathalyzers to put in people's homes.
To reduce the contact because of the virus?
Yes, ma'am.
So I assume that this, these funds will go against any additional expenditures that the county will incur because of the COVID virus?
Yeah.
I'm asking the chairman, I guess, because I guess you would know that, Anita, but I was just wondering, so this would go in that special fund?
This, this is not, yeah, this is not something that I will claim, you know, with the, what you, the Board of Commissioners has asked us to tell you what our extra expenses are? Because I'm having, getting state funds, I wouldn't put this on that spreadsheet, because it's going to be reimbursed by the state.
Okay. Well, it's a bookkeeping thing, but money in, money out, so to speak. So I'll leave that up to Jennifer Hallman, who is keeping track of all the COVID extra expenses due to the COVID virus. So thank you, Anita.
Thank you, Ms. Geider.
Thank you. You're you're a back, Commissioner Geider? I'm assuming? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Anita.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
All right. All right. Board of Commissioners, we're going to move on to tab. Yes?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Yep. To Madam Geider, to Madam Geider's point, is there any way we could, county administrator, can you speak to what was the instructions to the full organization in keeping up with these expenses? I'm always concerned when we have off-balance-sheet accounting, that, that becomes an issue for me, that says, it raises an eyebrow, like, wait a minute, what now? It can't be discretionary what we're going to report and not report. We need a full understanding of expenses that are part of this, or revenues. Else, if we get partial information, then I think that's misleading, both to the Board of Commissioners, and I don't think it's intentional. But when I hear comments that, well, we're not going to report, well, what were the instructions, and how do we reconcile that? Because we need a full picture. What were the revenues, and what were the expenses for this once-in-a-lifetime? We need to monitor this. We need the data. And so it's not to usurp the need, obviously, anybody in their respective agencies to do their job, but we're, we're the ones accountable for the money. And so county administrator, can you speak to that, and how, and Director Hallman, we don't have to belabor this, we can pick this up in finance later today in the Finance Committee, but I, I want to be clear, let's not do that.
Okay. I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Robinson, and I will make sure that these expenses are on the sheet. I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that they were going to be reimbursed through other sources. So that's not a problem. Absolutely. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
And yes, Commissioner Robinson, all departments are tracking their expenses that are related to the COVID-19. And I think what Anita was saying, these funds are directly coming from the state, so it's not expenses that we're, I mean, we're definitely getting reimbursed for these through a separate grant. I understand. No problem. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm out.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Geider?
We will be getting several grants from different, from the state agencies, from the federal agencies, or whatever, and they need to be tracked, because we're probably having to fund the items upfront, and then get reimbursed on the back end. But we need to clarify that everything, whether it's going to be 100% reimbursable from the state or whoever, that we still have to show that, because we're, we're funding it upfront, we will receive the reimbursement on the back end. Money in, money out. And I yield back.
All set.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Geider. I appreciate your statement, money in, money out. We are tracking that, Mark is still, and the finance team is doing a fantastic job so far. They have some, the ledger, they're keeping up with the information. Mark, if you just want to respond to how we are tracking, I know you've reported some out, could you just respond how we're tracking at this point? Thank you.
Yes. So we've sent out a spreadsheet to all departments, and they are tracking all their expenses on that spreadsheet. So to date, as of, well, I guess as of about a week ago, last Tuesday, all the departments submitted their expenses, and it's included on the Finance Committee report today, and we continue to track those.
Awesome.
I hope that answers your question.
From the 2009 flood, the hurricanes, the tornadoes, it's business as usual as far as tracking these expenses.
Okay. Thank you. I hope that answers your question, Commissioner Geider. We are doing a great job. We have a 2:00 finance meeting. Again, I certainly provided access for any commissioner that wanted to join in, or our citizens, just to look at the, to just take a sneak peek at what we're doing in terms of our finance. We're looking at recovery, or revenue recovery plan and expense reduction plan. So welcome you to join our 2:00 finance meeting today. Thank you. I'm going to move on to tab number seven. I'm sorry, tab number six. And tab number six is one of our resolutions, and I believe our tax assessor, Mr. Director Waldorf is on the phone, is, tab number six is Authorization to Approve, A Resolution Approving the Waiver of Certain Penalties and Interest by the Douglas County Tax Commissioner and Authorized the Chairman to Sign All Related Documents. Thank you, Director Waldorf, for taking a look at this information that I had sent over through Mark, to see what your thoughts were, and I appreciate you developing a resolution. Director Waldorf, Benny, are you here?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Oh, okay. Could you please explain to the Board of Commissioners what this resolution is and the purpose of it?
What this does is give the waiver, the interest and penalties that the Tax Commissioner would be required by law to place on late taxpayers for the days of March 21st through June the 1st, if it's before, if he opens up before that, it would be the opening day. It'll free the, it'll give the Tax Commissioner authority to waive those late charges and penalties he has to assess, and also give him a leeway to not put a 10% penalty on personal property returns that are late, because it couldn't be properly submitted, because the office was closed to the public, and still closed to the public until whatever time the Board of Commissioners opens it back up.
Okay.
So it's just to, all of the counties in the state of Georgia probably would do this. This is also suggested by the Department of Revenue to give the taxpayers a break, because they couldn't properly submit their personal property reporting forms, they couldn't properly pay their taxes from the time the Tax Commissioner's been closed, and right now, we're still closed. So that's a good leeway to give some property taxes.
Madam Chair, this is Ken Bernard.
Yes.
Madam Chair, that, the form submitted, I've reviewed, and also it's been reviewed by ACCG. It is a form similar to the one being passed around the state, and what Benny has said is correct.
Okay. Thank you so much, Attorney Bernard. Thank you so much. Board of Commissioners, any questions regarding solution? Vice Chairman Robinson, I hear you.
Yes, that's fine. Quick question for you, Benny, and I acknowledge the fact what the state is doing, and obviously, every dime helps our community, obviously, the citizens. I've, I've got an operational question, which is dealing with the digest in general. And obviously, we just had this conversation, so it's just a repeat what you shared with me, is, well, where do we stand with our digest? I recognize penalties and things, what we, what we will impose upon the citizens, if, if in fact they're late, or not late, or whatever. But how do we stand operationally in being able to do our digest? And I, you know, what is our timeline? Are we on track? I mean, it's been a while since we really talked about it. I'm not looking for anything specifically, but just awareness that says, okay, here we are going through almost May, and where do we stand on our normal operate? Are we business as usual? We sticking to our same timeline? Or did we make adjustments? And I'll leave it at that. That's all I want to look, and I'll yield the floor. Thanks, Benny.
We're trying to continue on to the same timeline, the assessment notices out by July 1st, digest submitted to the state by September 1st. The state's giving us all kinds of extra leeway that they're not changing the law for, but as far as no relation penalties, we were, had to be late. But I think right now, we're on, pretty much on track. We got all the new construction entered, personal property may be lagging a little bit behind, and have to do a good many NODs, but as far as everything else, it looks like we're going to be on track.
I yield, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Any questions, any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you so much, Director Waldorf, for bringing this information. Certainly, we want to give considerations to every citizen in Douglas County, and that's what this Board of Commissioners is, this is what we made of. We're putting service before self, and want to make sure we give consideration to every citizen here in Douglas County during this very unprecedented time. So thank you for working on that and generating the resolution so quickly. Thank you, Attorney Bernard, for working on this as well. All right. Move on to, Board of Commissioners, I encourage you tomorrow to look at your, look at your expenses, and please be prepared to approve accordingly tomorrow. And then we, if there's no other comment at this particular time, I'm going to move into presentations. We have three presentations this morning, and I wanted to allow our speakers at least a 10-minute timeframe, so they could speak and provide a good, detailed presentation, and then we'll move on with questions. I'm going to start this morning with our SPOLOST update by Terry Gabel. Mr. Gabel, are you on the phone?
I am, Madam Chair.
Okay. Could you please kick off with our first presentation this morning? Appreciate you being here.
Yes, ma'am. So let me, I'm going to share screen here and put the PowerPoint up. Okay. Good morning again. It's Terry Gabel with Atlas, and we'll be doing the April update on the SPOLOST program. Hope everyone can see the PowerPoint. So the, the revenues that we're reporting on this month will be the February revenues, 2020 February revenues. It'll be the work that has been accomplished through March. So we have one month left, left in year three. Once we get the revenues in from March, we're actually in April, that's the beginning of SPOLOST year four, to give you a perspective on kind of where we're at in the overall program. And in saying that, before I get into some revenue updates and project updates, so we are moving very cautiously as we move into SPOLOST year four due to the COVID impacts, obviously, and we'll be looking at different models of some reductions in revenues, looking at some impacts to projects, just to try to keep a heads up on what may occur as we move through SPOLOST year four. But in saying that, I'll jump into the revenues. So we, we did invoices paid out in last, last month, in March, did drop some. We paid out about a half million dollars in, in March, worked through March, so we're up around, we're approaching that $40 million mark as to what's been invoiced in the program. Majority of that was of the half million dollars that was invoiced out was done in the Parks Program, and it'll continue to pick up with the, with the construction projects that we were underway with. The, in looking at the collections for February, this, we're still pretty solid with that. We didn't obviously come above the bar, that being represented, a representation of the projections. We were slightly under it, but we'll certainly take that with the environment that we're in right now. We're about $70,000 under projections, but still, like I said, still being fairly stable with, with the dollar amount versus the projections. So February came in at 1.9 million. The, for the total of SPOLOST year three, we're roughly $24.4 million. So we're still looking at around $2 million that were over projections for SPOLOST year three. And then, if you look at the overall programs, SPOLOST years one, two, and three, we're approximately $73.8 million for total revenues that have been collected. And if you compare that to projections, we're about $3.2 million over. So no really changes there as of today with our revenues. Looking at the bond servicing and payment obligations, we paid the large payment of $18.9 million April 1st. The collections were actually made with the December 2019 collections, where we actually had enough revenues at that point to, to make the bond payment, but they're set up to make that last payment April 1st. So we're solid there. The bond payment's been made for SPOLOST year three, and as we move into SPOLOST year four, I'll start reporting on the, the amount that's going to be due in SPOLOST year four. It'll be slightly, slightly less than SPOLOST year three, and then after that, we got one more smaller paper compared to the, much smaller compared to these, and then we'll be done with the, the paybacks on the bond. So with that, I'll get into some project updates, kind of get you guys up to where we're currently at. The county ride, countywide digital radio system, we did cut over to the, or moved over to the new system in March, the middle of March. Chief's given some good reports on that, just from, from just period use, usage of the system. I think they're very happy with it. As you remember, the Board did, at the beginning of the month, they approved a revised complete, the completion date for the radio system from April 30th to June 30th, primarily due to COVID-19 impacts. So they needed a little bit more time, and that really was centered around the technical testing that's going to begin the 1st of May for the overall system, and will primarily run through most of May. Once they get that completed, it'll, should put us in June and have a few, the June to kind of wrap the whole program up and turn it over to the county. So good news there. Hopefully, by the end of June, we'll have a complete system and be up and running 100% with great coverage. The, the amlets, the 2020 amlets for SPOLOST, the chief had two for, for SPOLOST year four, and as I said, we are moving forward cautiously with, with new things that we're ordering. The chief's ready to put those on the street. At this point, we're going to, we're looking at maybe holding, holding off on that for another month or two, and if we do put it out, we'll put it out with an option in there of possibly only purchasing one amulet this year, but we are looking at that at this point. The next thing is fire truck, fire, fire engine for 2019. You know, I had reported on that. This is last year's, actually, SPOLOST year three's fire truck. It does take several months to get these fabricated from scratch, but we are expecting, it's on schedule, we're expecting it to be completed, and chief take delivery of that next month. And so we do have one fire truck that's in SPOLOST year four. The, the bids were received on March 31st, and the chief will have, will make a recommendation to the Fire Committee May 5th on accepting one of the bids for the fire truck for 2020. The last project I'll report on in, for the Fire Department is Station 11. Chief is, this project is being funded out of the chief's fire station renovations. This will be a critical project for them. It's, it's offstate right now, 92, just north of Douglasville. This will be a critical project for him. It's, it's off State Route 92, just north of Douglasville. It's improved mostly site improvements to improve access, fire truck access to the rear of the, the fire station for the bays. It'll be enlarging the parking lot and the driveway. We'll be making some site improvements for that. And also doing another critical role will be to upgrade the septic system for the fire station that's badly needed. We've already contracted with a design team for that. It was Southeast Civil Group. They, they are located here in Douglasville, which is good for the program. And they, they already are working on two of our projects, and we've had good luck with Southeast Civil Group. Look forward to to finishing or getting this project underway. They started the preliminary survey and design on it. And we'll be working with them through the summer to get this project up and bid out for construction. And with that, I'll move into, into the transportation program. The resurfacing program for 2020, we did lower the SPOLOST dollars for 2020. We decided to provide the match for the L-Meg grant, the state L-Meg grant. So we're looking at roughly about a $2 million resurfacing program for 2020. Part of this work will be bid out to the private industry for the, doing the milling and the patching. And then we'll be doing the resurfacing to be done in-house with Douglas County's maintenance department. So we're looking forward to getting that started. They expect the bids to be turned in, in early May for the milling and patching. Obviously, that's the first thing that's going to need to be done to get to the resurfacing stage. We're moving to some of the intersections. Stewart Mill Road at Reynolds Road, this is in the, in the right away phase. Miguel Staff has several projects now that that are in the right away phase, and they're working aggressively to try to get these, there's about nine parcels from Stewart Mill that'll have to be acquired. And as soon as he gets those, the plans are ready, and we'll be able to get this project bid out for construction. Right Start John West Road. This project, the bids were accepted May, March 19th. We had several bidders to submit a bid, which is always good to get more bidders. Miguel will be, Miguel Staff will be presenting a recommendation for an award on that to the, to the committee this week. So this will be another project that will get under construction late spring, early summer here shortly. And then Sweetwater Church Road at Doris Road is under construction by Summit. They're on schedule. They've been, been up there several times, mostly grading and drainage work going on. But you can just tell by riding through there just how tight that intersection was, and it's, it's very difficult for the, for the contractor even get in and do the work. But hopefully when they get done with this, it'll be a much, much improved intersection for the traveling public. Chapel Hill Road is our turn lane project on Chapel Hill, just south of I-20. A much-needed project that's still in the design phase, and Miguel continues to work with the design team and, and getting some numbers on, we've talked about for a few weeks or months now here about looking at a five-lane section that's in the long-range transportation plan, plan for Douglas County anyway. Just looking at some cost numbers and making a decision, the board making, providing the board with enough information to make a decision on whether we want to use that template or just stay with a three-lane section. So once we get that decision finalized, the design team can move forward with finalizing their plans and getting Miguel the right-of-way plans. So continue on, very active project that's still underway. Highway 5 at Douglas Boulevard. This is being designed by Michael Baker. This is our right turn lane on Highway 5 onto Douglas Boulevard. They have, they've got an original, they've got a concept, a preliminary concept developed. So we, we're steadily working on that. Looks like the turn lane, Miguel said, is going to be a little bit longer than what we anticipated, which that means it's just that much of a queue at that intersection, and it's needed. First thing they're trying to get established, and that's, that's, and it's a main factor right now, is its location of all the underground utilities and aerial. Because this will impact the, the map, could impact the amount of right-of-way that they've got established for the, for the turn lane. And would, and get that worked out with GDOT. So it's well underway, but we, we're in the early design stages of it, and hopefully be making some good progress with it over the next couple, two or three weeks. Post Road Bridge over Dog River. This project is on schedule. It's, it's, and we've been reporting on it to be the contract of being here in the fall. No change in that. And we'll be looking forward to getting him started September, October of this year, and getting that critical bridge replaced on Post Road. There are sidewalk projects, the, the, the sidewalk at Lithia Springs Elementary School and the Chestnut Log Middle School. Miguel Hasit is working on the contract documents to get it in, get it into advertisement for construction. So we'll be looking forward to getting these two projects underway this spring or this summer. The new Manchester High sidewalk that we've been reporting, obviously is located on a state route. So that's we, in partnership with GDOT, not only on the permit to be able to do the work, but also Miguel is trying to get the speed reduction approved for that corridor, not only for the safety of the, of the, of the students out there, but it really is becoming critical. We are finding out for the crosswalk and being able to have a protected crosswalk. We got, we got to, we're hopefully are going to be successful in getting that speed limit reduced out there so we can have a protected crosswalk for the kids across over 92 to the high school. So it's underway, and we're, we're certainly on top of it and working with the design team to get this project moving as soon as we get everything GDOT needs for the permit and for the, the speed reduction. Whitestone Culvert, you remember, is, is under construction with Corbett Construction. We did have to delay them some with, with the schedule to do a redesign on the footing, which is, in a way, good news for Douglas County. It is reducing the construction cost on the project, which is good news. But on the flip side, it has delayed the project some, but we still think it'll be completed on time, on schedule. We just need to get Miguel's work and get everything finalized with the paperwork and the documents in order to get the contract back and then go to work. So looking forward to that and getting that project back cranked up in construction. Our streetlights are moving. As, as the board has seen, we've had three of the five interchanges have been, we're working through the process of getting an MOU with GDOT, which has to be done before the work starts. Two of them already approved by the board, and there's, I noticed another one is on the agenda for, for this month to be approved. And that'll leave us two interchanges that, that we'll need to do the same, or follow the same format with. I do believe one of them, or the other two maybe with the, one of them is Post Road, so it won't have to have a, an MOU with GDOT. But it is moving forward, which is good news. So that work will be starting soon, hopefully early, like, again, late spring, early summer. Our State Route 92 project at Mount Vernon, a critical intersection that we've been, we've been monitoring very closely, police department has. We, we did get, the contract did get started in March, and all we're doing is putting a signal up here, so it's going very quickly. The, at least the schools were out, and it gave them an opportunity to get in there and, and get the, get the poles up, and you'll, you can see that the signals are, signal heads are up. The only thing left to do there is to get the control panel in and get the power on, and I'm sure that's going to follow here very promptly. And we'll have this, hopefully have the heads up and flashing and do the 30-day burn, and they'll have this up and running within the next month or so. So good news there and get the signal in at a much-needed intersection. The Highway 92 at Riverside Parkway, we've got a design team looking at this intersection. Miguel is keeping us updated. Apparently, GDOT is also looking at this, this intersection for one of their quick response projects, the same thing they did at, at Mount Vernon. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that's going to move forward. And GDOT will come in and do a signal there and then get that project under construction. I don't think there's been anything confirmed there yet, but we're waiting on, waiting on some final decisions from GDOT before anything else is decided. That's the wide improvements we'll, we'll be doing at this, at this intersection. Lee Road widening project is, is on schedule still to, to have this project ready to advertise by June. Miguel's reported to us that the design is pretty much complete. This is Michael Baker again. They just got to go through the review process with GDOT, and we, again, we're getting lined up to get this project advertised late May or early June. Our Maxim Road project from the Thorn Road intersection is a GDOT project up to the Cobb County line is, is underdesigned by Low Engineering. Should be a fairly quick project. Miguel's saying that we odds are at this point, we will not have to get any additional right-of-way, which is always a plus. Even easements can become critical, can slow the project down considerably. So hopefully we'll, we'll be good there with the right-of-way, and this project will be up and running as far as construction this summer, once the design is completed. And with that, I'll move into our parks program project updates, which is primarily boiled down to the project that we have ongoing this summer, all of them being advertised and are under construction. Our Deer Lake Park tennis court projects and new lighting. I've got some pictures here of each one. There's been a good bit of work done out there. We did, we were, we had anticipated hitting rock at this site. We knew it was there, didn't know the extent of it, but we did end up having to raise the tennis courts. But what you're looking at there is, is the, we're at grade for the tennis court pads, so there has been a good bit of work done. We had to raise it approximately 12 inches to keep, to stay out of the mass bulk of the rock there. And you, what, this was taken last week. We've got, what you see in the foreground there is the footings have been poured, and they're getting ready to pour the slab for the, the center building, which is really just a small pavilion and some bathrooms that are in tennis courts will be on each side of it. So it's, it's moving. They're working to get the, the underground utilities in, weather permitting. And you can see in the background, that pile back there is, it was a lot of rock, and that, that mainly primarily came from installing the drainage pipe. So, but we're working through that and making, making a good bit of progress considering the the rock that we, we encountered. Our multipurpose rec center started work in March. That's Ray Lynn out of Carrollton. They're making good progress. They, they did get out, they got, they got site set up, the construction trailers out there, they got it cleared. One thing that's, is, has been a little tricky with the weather is we've got to bring in fill dirt with this project. In order to do that, we've got, we, we've got to get that, the, the grade they're sitting on right, they've got to get that stabilized. And we have, we have had some issues with weather, with all the rain we've had this winter and some, some unsuitable soil. So we're working through that and trying to get the ground stabilized so we can start bringing some structural fill in to get up to grade and start the footings and slab for the building. So they're working as best they can and, and working through the, the, some challenges early on, which is not unusual for vertical construction. The senior center in Lithia Springs started in, also started in March. They have, at the timing of it, we had some issues early on with the, the, the same thing with the rec center here, but we didn't have to bring in all the fill. So once we got this area stabilized, they, they hit the ground running. As you can see, you, that is just about the full slab area for the entire building. And if you can, in the, to the left of the slide there is the pool. So they, Headley's made good progress there out in Union. They've done a good job so far in getting that site dried in and, and being able to get the, actually get the footings poured and get the slab poured. The slab was poured as early as last week. So a good job to them considering the weather that we've been having. And they'll be bringing in, the next thing that'll be going up here will actually be the, some of the parking lot area and the trusses for the building itself. So good job there, and we're making, again, making good progress based on the implement weather that we've had. And then the, the last two projects that I'll report on in parks are the, are concession buildings, new concession buildings at Bill Art Park and Fair Play Park. These were bid out at the same time. Prime Construction has got the contracts. They have started. They've got a work order to start. They started work on, first thing we have to do is demo those buildings. They started that last week, and they'll be progressing with, with this project as we move into April and into some drier weather, hopefully. And with that, Madam Chair, that concludes the presentation. And I will, I will open it up for questions for the board.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Gable. Board of Commissioners, do we have any questions for Mr. Gable?
Madam Chair.
Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be as tight as I can. Terry, let's back up to your opening statements regarding the SPOLOST revenues. You guys have done a great job overall in managing this SPOLOST. I want to give credit. I've been able to witness two, two SPOLOST go down. One was a single building. But to watch you guys oversee this has been commendable, and I do appreciate staff. I mean, we had a chance to step back for a minute over the past couple of months, and we have to, to appreciate the swiftness and just the efficiency, and a lot has gone on. And I, I know sometimes we're caught up in the day-to-day and the pressures, but you guys have done an excellent job. And, and so I, I want to, you know, you as well as the directors, as well as the county administrator, you guys have rocked this thing. And again, to, now, now is one of those, okay, let's just finish it. All right. So I think the, the public has been long in, in waiting for something for them. You know, again, while we appreciate administrative buildings, every now and then it's like, well, what about me? And I think this SPOLOST and the details associated was very sensitive. It was very inclusive, and I don't want that to fall to deaf ears. All right, so let me get into the revenues. So our revenues are rolling along as of February. We were solid. I know in February, I asked for at least a a recast, a reforecast of things. I know I reemphasized it in March. Do we anticipate that that reforecast will be presented during the finance committee today? Because that's what they ask. I'm just, again, it's been a while since we all talked, but please confirm for me that that's going to be presented, or it's going to be incorporated.
Mark, I may let you chime in there, but we, I've been, the SPOLOST team has been working with, with Mark and Jennifer. We do have some numbers that we've been looking at. They've been reviewed by both Mark and Jennifer. Mark, I'll, if, if that was, if the plan was to present those today?
No, not today. We've looked at them, but we're not 100% comfortable with the numbers. So we don't want to provide you any data that's incorrect, but we're getting very close.
All right, so we'll, I'll table that comment. This, Jennifer, Director Hallman, just make a note that during our miscellaneous comments that we'll cover this. Again, if we're looking at our operational costs, we need to look at our capital costs. And so I know we're going through this exercise, but they must be aligned. They, they can't be unaligned. So let it go. I gotta keep moving them on time. Do we know that? All right, moving on. Next topic. Let's talk about Miguel, regional alignment. The Lee Road project, which is important, it covers three districts. It's not all concentrated in District 2, though the widening was. Can you talk about that? I mean, are we still going to go forward with that project? The state is live, assuming all things being equal. Now, I heard Terry, but I want to hear you say it, validate it, that we're moving forward with that project.
Yes, Commissioner, that, that project is on schedule. And it will be ready to go to a bid in late May or early June. And as of this point, everything is moving along.
So we, we have a plan, and we don't have to get into the capital or the comprehensive transportation plan. We'll cover that during the transportation committee tomorrow. But Terry did highlight, like, these intersections alone, 92. I mean, we talked about Mount Vernon. We talked about, obviously Riverside. Obviously, you've got the Anoakee, and then obviously have lately, based on my town hall, but there's the 166 that, that sort of dead ends into Fairburn. All of these are, you know, what I want to call what, east-west, and they're dumping into this major artery. And again, it, it appears that we've outgrown our infrastructure, and we're, we're doing a lot of left turns, right? We're doing things that wasn't anticipated in times past. Do we think this will get us there? Because again, it's already Because again, it's already in play. Is this more of just a short-term play or is there a better solution? And you don't have to go long on this. I just want to market.
Yes, I think the improvements to those intersections will cover us for, for quite a while. Certainly with changes in transportation patterns, circulation and volume. There's going to be other things that we need to look at and, and improvements to be made in the future, but what we're looking at, at both Riverside, Anawaki and obviously Mount Vernon will carry us for quite a while. I would say a good 10 years or so.
Very good, very good. All right. And it brings me to my last comment and, which deals with specifically the community center. And, and again, I want to thank the Parks and Rec Committee, specifically the Chairman, Commissioner Mitchell third for, for ensuring those projects got to the place that they are right now. Again, that I need, if Director Dukes is there, I just want you to confirm the commentary that was extended by Terry Gable over the SLOSH, which is we're, we're on track for that community center. That's something that has been obviously fought for out on that side of town. It actually completes Boundning Waters, which was a gym. I mean, as you know, we put a soccer field out there, a football field out there. Obviously we put that concession stand, duels. I mean, so this is sort of the crown jewel, the sort of put this community center that goes along with our aquatic center and fields. Can you speak to that and confirm that we are on track in light of? And I mean, barring normal, whatever you talked about, rating and dirt and so forth, are we on track and when do we anticipate the completion of that project? Director Dukes, if you're online.
Commissioner Robinson, this is Mark Teal. Gary Dix is not on, online. This project is on track. And correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, but it may be after the first of the year before the building is completed.
That's correct.
That's correct. But yes, sir, we are on track.
We are on track. So, so again, I, I do appreciate all the efforts that has gone into this SLOSH. I mean, not just things that are concentrated in, in, in the district, but also, you know, the fire. I mean, I mean, just again, think about 2009 SLOSH, there was nothing by way of, of, of first responders. Yes, we had a new building, but they didn't have equipment. And I, I appreciate the fact that the fire is being well taken care of. I, I know Madam Guyder gets credit for that, to ensuring that, but, but beyond that, it was necessary. So see the upgrades for, you know, this was a little bit more inclusive. I wish the sheriff would have been included by way of cars. But nonetheless, I mean, it's the hand that was dealt. And to, to hear the fire trucks, to hear the ambulance, to hear all that's like, oh, that's, that's, that's great. It was an upgrade. So I want to thank all of you guys for that. Madam Chair, that's it. That's my time. I yield. Thank you.
All right. No problem. Any other comments from Board of Commissioners before we move on?
Yes, ma'am. Terry. Let's see.
Yes, ma'am.
Miguel, since you're online, let me ask you a question. A lot of people have been asking me, why aren't they paving now while the, there's no traffic? GDOT is paving in Atlanta. I witnessed, personally witnessed paving of a, of a lot here in Douglas County the other day. Surely we can distance each other on, on a job like that. Construction is still open because it's considered essential. So why are we not paving while the traffic is down?
Well, Commissioner, one of, one of the difficulties when having quite a number of personnel in close proximity to the paving machine is maintaining the social distancing. We're looking at, as soon as some of the criteria are relaxed in terms of the distance and the number of personnel, to be able to restart that, we're also bidding out and should be receiving bids probably the middle of May to do the, the milling and the patching. That work has to be done before we do the paving. So we're, we're working towards getting us to where we can start paving. And as soon as we're able to do that, we will. But at, at this point, we're, we're being a little extra cautious in terms of getting that many personnel close to the paving machine, because once the paving machine is moving and laying down asphalt, they gotta stay within a few feet of each other doing that. So that's why we're being a little extra cautious.
Well, I will say that the paving job that I witnessed was they were wearing masks. So, and they were outside. So, but anyway. Another question is Highway Five, the northbound turn lane. Could you elaborate on that?
Yes, the design team has taken a look at that, the, the requirement there, the, the needs. There are two components to the length of a turn lane, one being the speed element that goes into vehicle being able to decelerate and make the turn. And the other component is, is called, referred to as the queuing. How many vehicles are likely to be waiting to make that turn? What they have found is that in order for that intersection turn signal, turn lane to be effective, the lane actually has to extend south, much further than we had originally anticipated. So everything else in terms of how wide it needs to be, the, the issue at the very intersection with the proposed development there, that is, we're having discussions with them and that's still ongoing. However, the, the element of the length of the turn lane, we're, we're going to need to have discussions with the developer because it's going to impact not only the first driveway, but the second driveway as well. So we're, we're conceptually have developed a, a concept plan for the length and the width. And, but we're, they're doing additional research in terms of what the utilities are underground to see where those could be located. So we can then approach the developer with more specifics as to exactly how much width of right of way we need and also the length of the lane, how far down it needs to go and what, what other impacts it will have on those signs that they installed along both driveways.
Miguel, do you think that this job is in jeopardy?
In, in terms of being able to be done or at all or?
We have two things going on. We have the development of that corner, which I'm sure that the owner of the property wants to move forward with if they have a contract or have a buyer in the queue. So we have that to contend with. And then we have all the funds about the, the virus. Whether or not the sales taxes and the SLOSH money is going to come in as as badly as we're anticipating. But we're funding that entire project and the state is not even on board with this. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, Commissioner, that is correct. However, because the road is under state jurisdiction, we have to coordinate with them and they have to approve the improvements that we're proposing. So I, I don't, to, to answer your original question, I don't think that project is in jeopardy from the standpoint of us being able to work something out with the, the width of the right of way that, that we can have. The, the issue right now is in terms of the lane itself, we know we can accommodate the lane. What we're looking into is where the utilities are going to go. And there are options for that, some more costly than others. For example, underground utilities normally don't want to be, or we don't want them to be under the paved road or the paved lane. So having to relocate those, the question is, well, can, do we have enough right of way to do the lane and relocate those utilities? And in order to answer those questions, we have to get more specifics. We have to have more specific information as to where things actually are. So that is part of the work that's ongoing now, but I don't think from that standpoint, from the technical standpoint, that the project is in jeopardy and from, from a funding standpoint, the city is contributing 50% of the cost. So although the state is not participating, I, I would anticipate that the project would be able to be done at some point, even if it has to be delayed if, if, if necessary, but the project is a worthwhile project and we continue with the design and then we'll, we'll make a determination or the board will make a determination as to when to move forward in construction.
And I will finish with this. This is not a SLOSH issue, but it is an issue with the people on the western side of the county. The southbound road work is being done at Douglas Boulevard and Highway Five. It has been stopped since before Christmas. Do you know what's happening with that?
Other, other than the issue they had with, with the utilities that's been resolved for a while, I'm not aware as to why. I know there's, I'm sorry.
They moved the water thing before Christmas. I actually ran into the contractor that was working on it at the Waffle House across the street. And he said, we'll be through by Christmas. So they, they finished that and they've had the, the plate on the pavement covering that, but I don't understand why they have it started doing what they need to do to get that extra lane in there.
Yeah, I, I agree. The, the project is not progressing as, as quickly as it probably could or should. They have done some additional work since they relocated the water line. They, they've worked on the median, taken out part of the median to accommodate the additional length of the turn lane. So that work has been done, but, but beyond that, I'm, I'm not aware as to any other issues keeping the contractor from proceeding with that work.
Could you just check on it and, and get back with me, please? I get a lot of questions about that intersection.
Sure, I'll be happy.
Just get back with me. I, I don't want to take everybody's time up about that. But anyway, I'll go back, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyder. All right. Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners before we move on?
I, I do have one, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, yes. And this is for Terry, I guess. I would like to Terry. Terry, are you still there with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Terry. So, so you're saying there was a shortfall this time around on the, on the revenues, roughly about 75, if I remember correctly, about 70?
Yes, about 70,000.
Okay. So that's offsetting that three roughly million that we had that we were kind of in the, in the green for. We were looking pretty good on three million, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay. All right, cool beans. And the radio system. So the radio system is we're not behind on it, but we've got a couple of other things. I know we've got to wait and do the actual final testing coming up here soon. Can you give me the details on that once again? I know we've been on a couple of calls and, and following that project. I mean, I think we're doing excellent with it. We just got a couple of hiccups that we got to kind of cross, correct?
Yeah, and, and the chief can chime in. But I think the biggest issue came in with COVID-19 and, and getting Motorola getting access to the facilities so they can do the technical testing.
Right.
That's what delayed, well, that's not knowing what will happen, but that's what has delayed it at this point. But there's, at this point, being optimistic about it, they're on schedule to complete it by, by the end of June.
Right. And, and right, right, with the testing. And that'll be 100% testing with a 95%. Get me on those numbers correctly. I think it's 95 and 97%.
95% coverage.
Coverage in the contract. And we, and we look to appear to be okay in that, in that vein, correct?
Yes, to my knowledge, it's been, they've been very pleased with it, what they're experiencing in the field.
Got it. And last but not least, are the sidewalk projects coming along?
So and, and Miguel may can chime in, but they, they're, they're ready. Miguel's got to get the, the contract documents completed. The plans are ready to go. Right away, everything's secured. It's just a matter of getting it in, getting, getting, and I'm talking about Lithia Springs and Chestnut Log, getting them in a letting.
So outside of that, we should be okay. And I know we've been way off target, but we should be there soon, I guess.
Yes, very soon.
Got it. And, and did David make it on to kind of update us on kind of how we're doing with, with those dollars and cents when it comes to minority and, and other type of makeups? Is, is David here with us or, or you can update us on that?
Yes, this is David Good. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes. Okay. David, can you give us an update on, on our minority contractors and how we're doing so great on that and that thing?
Oh, well, right now we're still reaching out to all of our different type of contractors, making sure that we go into the public sphere and lend them know that these projects are going on. At our next meeting, I'll be giving a full vendor update, which will include all the different vendors that we've had, you know, coming on, especially since this, um, construction. So we're about the same as it was last month, about close to like 39 to 40% minority participation. Because right now with so many different projects going on, there have been some minorities that have gotten chances from women-owned businesses to other minority-owned businesses. So right now we are on track of as far as our numbers have kept, have kept on rising. And as I've said before, that when it comes to out-of-state funds going into companies is because of Motorola, why that one is still much higher, because that's $16 million that was earmarked for them. So everything that I track is based upon the purchase order, not actual cost. You'll see extra costs once that project is done, then those extra cost numbers will come in. So if we come in at 15,800 instead of the little bit over 16 million too, then you'll see that. So right now we are still tracking everything I sent our press release earlier that said that the SLOSH team, even during this COVID-19 period, we're still tracking everything. We're tracking all of our projects. And if there's any hiccups or any holdups, we'll make sure we talk to the Commissioners and you guys can get it released out to the public.
Got it. Well, thank you, David, and, and continue the great work that you guys are doing though. And, and my last question though, Terry, is maybe more to the chief, if Chief Spencer on by chance, so he can update us? Okay, maybe not. I just wanted to kind of hear from him to make sure he's on, on board and okay with where we are with the radio systems, kind of how we're coming along with that and kind of his intake on what that looks like. So and I know he can't answer that though, Terry, so don't, don't worry about that. So on that note, I'll, I'll, I'll yield back and that'll be all I've got for right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Mitchell, I'm here now. Excuse me, I had to take a second.
Okay, all right. No, I would just wanted you to share with us kind of where you, are you okay with where we are with the radio system? I know we've had a couple of hiccups, nothing bad that's, that's taken us off course that much, but just kind of what your intake on where we are with the radio system though.
Uh, yeah, yes, sir. We are happy with the radio system, very happy as a matter of fact. Today, the Metropolitan Communications is starting the installs of the mobile radios in all of the Sheriff's Department vehicles. They completed the Fire Department installs last week. 911 has been up and running since March 17th. And all of our firefighters and sheriffs have been using the system since the 17th.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, yes, sir, we're, we're, we're happy with it. We've been utilizing it since March 17th and have had very few problems with it.
Got you. Okay, okay. Just, I, I know we've been on a couple of calls and, and it doesn't appear to me that we're having any issues, but I just want to kind of hear from you and for those who will be using it and how, what's your guy, what's your guys intake on it though. So, but all is good then. Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I yield back. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Guyder.
May I ask Chief Spencer, well, I may, I may have to ask Mark. I'm sorry. We're going to be under budget on the radio system. Probably the amount of about $700,000 is what I'm looking at. Is that true?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty close.
Well, I was just wondering, on the COVID-19 expenses, there was some full-face respirators and filters and things for the Fire Department. Can we fund that with SLOSH funds? and filters and things for the Fire Department. Can we fund that with splash funds saved by the radio system?
Well, yes, we could, but we have to go through the cash flow. As far as what's in our cash flow with the SPOSS expenditures, we didn't put the full estimated amount of the radio system. We only put the contract amount in there. So as far as cash flow goes.
You didn't have a contingency set aside in case something went wrong?
Yeah, contingency.
Okay, how much was that?
Um, I don't remember, but I think it was around five hundred thousand.
So the seven hundred thousand, does that include the five hundred thousand in the contingency?
No, my understanding is on top of that. That was the, that was the estimated amount from the beginning minus the contract amount, which included a contingency line item.
So I'm just wondering, can we use some splash funds to offset some of the things that are required by the Fire Department? Because there's certainly the responders.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we can.
We might look at that. The Finance Department might want to look at that because we need to use some funds that we do have available. So anyway, with that, I yield back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyer. Mark, were you finished? I believe you were wrapping up your sentence. What, did you have another comment, Mark?
Oh, I was just saying, yes, whenever we can use splash funds, we will. But also, we have to look at some of those expenses as well as far as face masks, M95 masks, some of those supplies. Hopefully, we'll get reimbursed through G-man, FEMA on those as well. So yes, we'll look at all revenue sources.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm going to move on to the next topic. Board of Commissioners, I didn't, for some reason, I missed tab number four, and I would like to go with that before I call for our next presentation. Tab number four is Authorization to Approve an MOU with GDOT to install roadway lighting, lighting at State Route four zero two I twenty, at State Route five, Bill R. Interchange, north and south ramps, and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents. I believe, is this yours, Mark, or, or Miguel?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, it's mine. So this is the, the exact same as the last two MOUs we had on last meeting, which were Lee Road and Chapel Hill Road, I believe, for the first two MOUs. This one we received from the state this week, actually probably Thursday, we added to the agenda. So it's a memorandum of understanding for us to maintain the lights, the streetlights at this location. So the streetlights at the end of the ramps where Greystone is in the process of getting their permit. This should be the last step on this location for them to receive a permit. And we'll have MOUs, we'll bring them to the board as soon as we receive the rest of them from GDOT.
Okay, thank you so much, County Administrator. Board of Commissioners, any questions regarding tab number four or comment? Okay, I'm going to move on to our next presentation. I didn't, Board of Commissioners, I didn't forget, tab number five is intentional. I'm going to come back to that once these two presentations are made. Our first presentation is our Community Service Board update. Mr. Ray Lightford, are you on the line? Are you? Ray Lightford, are you, are you here?
I am here. Good morning.
Okay, good morning, good morning. Would you please, you have a presentation this morning, would you please present to the Board of Commissioners? I believe we need someone to turn that camera off.
Can everybody see the presentation?
Yes. Can everybody see, Board of Commissioners, can you see?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, this presentation is, is just a breakdown of what's happening with our revenue flow due to COVID-19. We had to make some really tough, tough adjustments back in the beginning of March that have had a financial impact. And just talking about that a little bit, as well as some of the things that we do know that are happening at the state level and the federal level as far as it pertains to mental health. So one key point I wanted to talk about, back at the beginning of March, we had to cease our Intellectual and Developmental Disability Day services. This program is, is probably one of our, our largest revenue generators. And one of the reasons that we had to cease these activities due to social distancing is that this, this population have very seriously behavioral health issues, as well as kind of hard for them to actually navigate with the social distancing rules, along with follow-on complications such as cerebral palsy, diabetes, their tube feds, spina bifida, and the list just goes on. And so one of the things for their safety, we had to cease those services. We've attempted to slowly move into telehealth platform with them to offset some of the costs that we are losing. But we do have a very large population of those individuals who cannot utilize that technology and also suffer from being deaf and meeped or nonverbal. And so that's the look of about what we're actually losing, about fifty thousand dollars a, a month when it pertains to intellectual development disabilities. As far as the mental health population, we saw some of the same things happening as well with our homeless activities, as well as some of our substance abuse groups. Because once again, those complicated immune systems, not having proper access to hygiene equipment, as well as some of the things that we may take advantage of, data, 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 just might not have the ability to have access to running water, other things like that. And so once again, we had to reduce the amount of services that we provide to those individuals, which again, is about another average loss of around fifty thousand dollars a month. And so right now, our projection is that between March first and the end of June, we will lose roughly four hundred and six thousand dollars. Now, some of the things that we have done with this, we have had to introduce telehealth platforms. We had a very small cost bringing those systems on to our infrastructure. But what we see is about a seventy percent decrease in revenues, because most of our services in the fee-for-service model are time-generated. And just to be honest and frank, people like to stay on the phone less than they like to talk face-to-face. And so we see reductions as well in that area. Okay, some, some of the facts that we have right now. So one of the things we looked into was the SBA loan program, but due to our quasi-governmental status, we were not able to get approved for that loan. Another area was the SAMP to CARES Act, which is directly for the integer population suffering from mental health issues. Because our population was under the five hundred thousand, it seemed that the state of Georgia would be giving those funds direct, and they will appropriate those funds at some time to each community as they see fit. Okay? And then another thing is that the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities of Georgia decided to shift from fee-for-service model, which is that basically we got reimbursement on the amount of people that we served, serviced to a guaranteed monthly drawdown for the duration of COVID-19. So from March to the end of June, which would conclude the fiscal year for mental health in Georgia. And that's in process now. So we're awaiting updates daily for that and what that revenue will look like moving forward. And then lastly, I just wanted to assure the, the board as well as our citizens that we are still up and open for operations. We are providing services, telehealth for those individuals who have fear and anxiety about coming in. But as well, we still maintain our, our open status for those individuals that need medication administration, injections, and may need hospital placement. And so we, we continue to operate this way throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. And so our request is, is, is pretty simple. We're requesting to try to help offset some of that cost that we're, we're currently occurring and losing because of our services adjustment. These revenues will be used to contribute to our addiction housing program, our, our mental health housing programs, as well as to continue to be able to provide various services to our integer population or our homeless population. Right now, one of the other things that we've done is that we have not furloughed or reduced our mental health staff at all, because we know that we are an aftercare agency in that, once this pandemic is over, that's when we're going to have to be able to stand up and answer the call. I will tell you right now, nationally, two of the biggest drivers for behavioral health and substance abuse issues is concerns about employment, safety, and also isolation. And so we know that our numbers are going to increase at some point in time toward the end of the pandemic. And then lastly, just continuing having funding for our operational costs such as our equipment, our lab testing, our, our ability to, to get the medications in, to continue to help service our population. One of the things that a lot of people really don't know that we do for a lot of our individuals, we serve as their primary care provider as well. So our doctors are writing their prescriptions for their blood pressure medication, their diabetes, cholesterol, and all of those, as well as the medications they need for their mental health issues. Madam Chair, I yield back to you for any questions?
Okay, thank you so much, Director Lightford. Board of Commissioners, before I chime in, where you did address, I'm going to speak first, and I'm just going to say you addressed those co-mobilities that are out there related to our mental health population, that our doctors, our psychiatrists are also providing medication, and also I call just that interventional care for our, our citizens. Thank you for your presentation. I'm just, before I go into further, I'll just yield and ask the Board of Commissioners, do they have any questions about the services you provide to our citizens here in Douglas County? Any questions from the board before?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Vice Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Lightford, thank you for being on, on this call and presenting this. Obviously, the Board of Commissioners as a whole has made a, shown a commitment to healthcare here at the local level over the past couple of years. I mean, at least in this administration, we've shown a commitment by increasing our overall commitment from two percent. And I believe Director Hallman, you can correct me, we're probably have gone up to maybe four percent. Director Hallman, can you confirm that number for us that, as relates to our overall budget? How much, what percentage is, is contributed to public health in general or healthcare in general? Director Hallman?
Yes, I'll, I'll pull the number and confirm in just a sec.
All right. So while, while you're doing it, that's fine. All right. So I, I know at one point, we were spending, if our overall budget is a hundred million, just for the record, we spent, two percent was allocated to, to health. That's defects, that's seniors, that's, I mean, think about it. Just two percent was dedicated to this whole bucket, which is the human side of us, the human side of our community, right? A welfare, only two percent of our budget was dedicated to this. I do appreciate Madam Chair's leadership to helping expand this. Obviously, the Community Service Board has, has, has been a tremendous asset to us. The new building, bringing Ray Lightford on board, as far as expansion is concerned, that's important. So I acknowledge where we are right now. I, I recognize where COVID has had an impact. And I, I asked, it sounds like there's an ask for roughly a hundred thousand dollars per month until the fiscal year kicks in for the state of Georgia. Director Lightford, is that really what this is about? There's an ask of, of commitment from the Board of Commissioners?
Commissioner Robinson, yes. I mean, we, we really tried to maintain our posture, not having a reduction in staff, so that once COVID, our procedures that were taking place now, the phases start to transcend, that we will be able to stand up and operate and go. And, and that's what that ask is for, is so that we can maintain our current structure to be available to the citizens when they need. I will just give a little light to, to go to that two and that four percent contribution as well for mental health. Last year, we serviced five thousand three hundred and seven citizens in Douglas County suffering from serious and persistent mental health issues, homelessness, and substance abuse. Out of that, one thousand forty-seven were children. And so these, these dollars will, will be greatly utilized to continue our case management programs, our supportive employment programs for those individuals, and our transition services for our individuals that are now coming back into the community from prior incarcerations.
All right. And so let's, I, I gotta, let's not isolate mental health to being just those who don't have access to healthcare. That, that, that would be a misstatement. Mental health, not necessarily mental illness, is, everybody is subject to that. Everyone. It's not a class issue. It's a health issue. And so I want to drive home the point why I recognize that two percent of our budget, whether it's two or four percent, is dedicated to those who probably don't have access to healthcare. Mental, mental health, it, it's, again, it's everybody. And what we're going through now, people get to process it differently. They may have private care. They may have different ways in which they fund it. But everybody is subject to this. And so as we go through this COVID, and with ten percent of our overall population is going to be unemployed, and, I mean, just the dreams and the things that we had because we were healthy, nothing was wrong. And for this thing to be shut down on us, to think that mental health is not going to come to the forefront, you, you don't even have to go there. It's going to matter. And we're going to have to focus on mental health. It's not just the physical health of, of sort of what we call those who may be exposed to the sickness, but the overall population is going to be greater. There'll be more people impacted from mental health than the physical health associated with, obviously, the, the virus. And so we can't lose sight of, it's, it's both. It's physical health and mental health. And we need to have an acknowledgement that says, look, guys, we got to deal with both of these. It's not sequential, it's concurrent. And this is sort of that first indicator. And I, I appreciate I was involved in that conversation last week, saying, no, you can't isolate this to being a financial committee issue. This is a board commissioner. Everybody, y'all need to weigh in on this. This is like, and it's the beginning. This is just beginning, where we're getting real numbers. And it's it, okay, here we go. All right, here we go. So I only bring that out. I'm buying time. Jennifer, can you confirm for me, Director Hallman, that was just sort of aside? Go ahead.
Yes. You can say that it was just under two percent a few years ago. Now we're about three percent. But as you know, because our budget has grown, that's why you don't see that big differential in the percentage-wise. But dollar-wise, you're looking at about a million dollars more to health than welfare than in the previous years.
Correct. And we, we don't have to cover it now. We'll take it to finance. I actually want to say, if you take away the, the increase in our overall budget, what would have been impact been? You know, if we isolated it. But we can, we can cover that later. All right. So I'm going to finish my, my, my statement and my ask. So Director Lightford, and again, we recognize this is a specialized population. I think it was an important call. I think, Madam Chair, you called it. It's something that obviously, your background gave you great insight and said, hey, we need to, we need to close that facility. It was, obviously, there's a lot of group activities, but they were exposed. And so I, that was one of those where we, we deliberately and intentionally shut that down for the greater good. But obviously, there was a revenue impact on that. And so they ask is that, how do we fill that hole when it was intentional? I'm not trying to put words in anyone's mouth, but I do acknowledge the decision that was made, and I believe it was the right thing for the greater good. So I have, I, I support the ask that's being asked here, but we must do that in, in, in recognizing there is a greater, a greater need as well. And we need to balance all of it. So, Madam Chair, I yield.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Robinson. Any other comments from the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Guyer?
All right. Thank you. Director, I'm sorry. Because my agenda's different than yours. I don't know what it is. Lightford, yes. Would it, maybe I should ask this to the chairman or the, the Finance Director. Would it be feasible for us to have Mr. Corbin look at their situation? He is an expert in financial affairs. And we have got to keep our compassion, but we've also cannot direct all of our intentions or our directions just on emotion. We've got to, I was looking at this, we spent more money on the food for the homeless than we did for the seniors. So for, because of this. You know, there are pantries where food can be gotten for free. I have a lot of people I direct to pantries through my Celebrate Recovery, because they've lost their jobs and they're not bringing any money in to buy food for them and their families. Well, they go to pantries. Why can't we utilize pantries? The churches have pantries. My church has one at Ephesus Baptist Church. There's one on Midway Road. There's one on Grady Street in Douglasville. We have got to utilize the faith-based, based community to help us through this. We cannot fund everybody. We cannot come up with four hundred and something thousand dollars because they've lost revenues. They may have to lay off people or let the people draw. They may have to lay off people or let the people draw unemployment. I don't know, but the, we have got to look at this in more detail. We can't just have a blanket, I need 400 and something thousand dollars to keep on doing what I'm doing. I understand there's a need, but there's a need everywhere throughout this county. There's a need everywhere. We've got to be more specific. And I would just suggest that maybe Mr. Corbin, even if we have to pay him a, a little extra money to look at the situation over at the Community Service Board and see where they could cut some costs. Everybody's got a cut. We may have to lay off employees. I was talking to the mayor of Belareca this morning, they're talking about laying off employees. Another city has laid off 25 employees. We don't know what's going to happen, we don't know how much longer we're going to be shut down because our numbers, I don't think have gone down, have they, Chairman? They keep going up as far as the number of cases, but not the number of deaths, thank goodness. But we have got to keep compassion, but we've also got to keep logic in there too. You can't get blood out of, as we used to say in the South. And we have got to look at more specific things. What is needed right now just to get us through until this economy is open up and we have additional revenues? We cannot replace everybody's loss. We can't replace our loss. We're going to have to cut services in order to fund what we have already obligated ourselves to. So we, we've just got to look at things, not with a broad paintbrush, but with a little detail brush. And I, I would urge that the Board of Commissioners have Mr. Corbin look at the situation over at the Community Service Board, but we've, we've got to learn that we can't do everything for everybody. And with that, I yield back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyer. Any other comments from the Board of Commissioners, anybody else? Oh, Commissioner Carthens?
Yes.
I'm looking for your, your initials, I didn't see you.
So one of my questions is for Ray Lightford, can you explain again, because I heard Commissioner Guyer speak something about food and I don't think the CSB has anything to do with food, it's more so the services that we provide or that they provide for the community in terms of mental health, physical health and transitional help with rents and utilities for those homeless and transient families? If Ray could explain that a little bit more for, for Commissioner Guyer and probably for our public who, who is watching, so if Ray could do that for us. And also, Ray, my second question for you is, how can you help us in terms of looking at testing and treatment when we decide to open the county back up? Is there a way that you can help us to facilitate that since you do have staff? Is there a way that we could partner with you in terms of getting those types of amenities as well? Those are my two questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Carthens. So to kind of just give the community an idea of our services, so right now currently with transitional housing, this is for any citizen that may be suffering from depression, anxiety or a whole gambit of mental health issues. We have a federally funded housing program currently right now, today, we house 147 individuals in Douglas County through scattered placement. We are the largest houser of people in Douglas County. And we also have eight individual homes that we actually own to house those people as well. We also have supported employment services. So individuals that lose their jobs, we actually have job coaches that go out, train new skills and help them get back into the workforce. And these are just two of our programs that are outside of our just mental health core capacity. We also have intensive case management services for those individuals who just don't have those routine skills or, or those abilities to adapt that some of us take for granted day to day, such as being able to balance a budget or a checkbook or, or being able to, to identify all of the community resources that are out there to navigate the waters to, to become more active in the community and have a more viable life. And to allude a little bit on your second part of your question, as far as our capabilities as far as COVID-19 in the future, well, as testing has, has been morphed, initially, the, the swab test went all the way back into the very rear of the nasal cavity. And because of that and the risk factors included, public health had decided that only general practitioners will be able to administer that test. With some of the new tests that they are working on right now, those swabs that are just in the frontal part of the, the nasal cavity, some of the tap and touch testing, we would absolutely be able to, to follow on and support those services. Right now, we have three locations in Douglas County. It would be very easy for us to convert one of those locations into a testing facility as need be. So we will be able to help stand up and assist public health in that environment if, if need be.
Thank you, Ray, I, I appreciate that. I just didn't want it to, to seem like we're just, you know, helping you, you know, to facilitate keeping staff on. Your staff is needed because you all helped to keep this county, I, I would say, help the quality of life for those citizens who are our neighbors. So Community Services Board just doesn't give our food and, 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 you know, it do a lot to keep, to keep us stable and, and to help this community stabilize itself. I also appreciate that you can assist us in, in those necessary ways so that we can open this county back up. I know we have 1,200 employees that will probably, probably need testing. We would love to have you all work with us in that way. So it's, it's vital that we help to keep the Community Services Board up and afloat. So with that, Madam Chair, I, I think I yield. Yes, I yield. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comment to pass out? Commissioner Mitchell? Yes?
So Mr. Lightford, just, I, I just want to make sure for clarity. You just stated that $100,000 per month is what you're, you're requesting, if I'm hearing this correctly or not. So I want to make sure I heard that correct.
Commissioner Mitchell, yes, that is correct. That'll help assist and match our shortfall with a lot of our programs that are federally funded, they are in kind match or we pay the revenues upfront and then get reimbursed. Right now, we're facing cash flow issues based on losing those revenues. And so just any, any and everything that was a reserve is now going forward to pay for rent and utilities for these individuals that we're trying to maintain housing while we're trying to get our service numbers back up. Some of the issues, I'll give you a great example. Telehealth pays about 70% less than what a face-to-face visit would pay for normal routine services, but we had, had to go to that method because of safety. You know, but I still have that same, you know, psychiatric, psychiatric cost that is sitting there. Some of the other issues are group services. We've had to suspend all of those because of these high-risk populations and being able to have them contained in certain areas. Some of our people don't have smartphones that have video capability. And because of telehealth and HIPAA rules, I cannot just provide that phone conference as a group without verifying a person's identity. So now we've had to lessen or to drop those services off altogether. And so that's what this is, is gap or bridge funding to get us back on our feet once we start to move into those other phases of reopening our county.
And just one for clarity, so this money could be reimbursable back to the county or should we expect that or I'm, I'm not sure, make sure, so the public and all of us will understand?
Well, Commissioner, yes, it could be reimbursed, but all of that is going to be driven by timeframe and then I'll also just explain a little bit about a pandemic to the community. The pandemic is the community at large now suffering from a mental health or a skewed vision of reality, which is going to impact how long or how quick it is before people come back into services, being able to take up and continue routine life. And so the intention would be to get to a point to where those revenues could be given back to the community. I cannot guarantee that based on how long that the, the mind frame and the fear factor exists within the community.
Right, right, I understand. I, I'm, and I'm only just trying to pick it out loud so everybody can kind of hear it and understand kind of what we're up against. I get what you're doing, I understand why you're doing what you're doing, but I think the public need to kind of understand what you're saying, that this hundred, additional $100,000 per month, here's where it goes, here's what you're doing and here's why we're doing this before we move in that direction. So interesting though, so I yield back, I just wanted to make that clarity known so, and make it public. So thank you again, appreciate it. I yield.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. And just as I wrap it up and close this particular presentation out, certainly we are in a state of emergency. Commissioner Guyer, I believe you had concerns about COVID-19. COVID-19 is, is an anomaly for all of us, it's new. Certainly, we could not prepare for it. Corbin, David Corbin will be attending our finance meeting today. Certainly, he is, he does not have a magic wand and he could not predict this, could none of us. Also, again, I just wanted to highlight the fact that we have a special needs population. I believe it's about 60 citizens who have comorbidity problems and also they have a lot of things that Ray mentioned earlier today, Asperger's disease, all types of things, but we still, that's, those citizens are Douglas County citizens and we're one Douglas. And I don't want to minimize our citizens in that respect. So that's the reason why Ray Lightford is before this Board of Commissioners today. Certainly, we want to make sure we provide services to our mental health and also our special needs population and not just allow this entire center to be wiped off the grid as a result of saying that we didn't want to put emotion, we, we wanted to certainly not put our emotion before logic. Right now, it's no emotion, it's bottom line, we have, we in a state of emergency and something happened unexpectedly. And I would like to, if possible, this Board of Commissioners would just consider the funding request. All right, Board of Commissioners, we have one more presentation this morning and then I'll lead back into the resolution that Commissioner Carthens worked on, or should I say she drafted and it's a very good resolution and it may dress, address some of the concerns that, should I say, address some of these presentations and that's why I wanted the presentations to go first. Next, Ray Lightford, are you finished? Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm going to move on to Douglas County COVID-19 Small Business Fund presentation. This morning, we have Chris Pumphrey and Sarah Ray this morning to talk about the small businesses and the impact here in Douglas County. Chris Pumphrey?
Yeah.
Are you there?
Good morning. Amy? Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you all for, for your time this morning and just kind of keeping along the, the same lines of discussion and the things that you're preparing for. We have also been kind of looking at what could we do to really help our small businesses, which truly are the lifeblood of our entire country. And so we've been looking at some things over the last several weeks and wanted to present this to you as well as you take on considerations for what you as Board of Commissioners can do for, for relief for our community. So myself and Sarah and a small group that represents members of my board and hers have been looking at what could we do to help support financially a number of our communities? As we all know, the SBA fund that was put out a few weeks back ran out of its $350 billion of funding as of Thursday of last week. And they were extremely overwhelmed with requests for funding through, through the banks. We had, you know, two of our board members are bankers and they have been really on the front lines of supporting businesses here on this matter. They have both, I think, all together funded over 60 or so businesses through the SBA funding. A number of them were awarded, but they also had a number of clients that requested funds that were not able to, to get those funds. And through that and through our discussions with them, you know, they definitely both agreed that there is definitely a need for supporting our small businesses beyond what has been put out there thus far. So unlike, you know, past economic downturns that were really kind of a slow roll and to your point, Chairman Jackson Jones, that this is something that really hit suddenly. There was something that businesses that no one could really prepare for in order to, to maintain it and stave off as much as possible. Just like with the plans for the SBA, you know, we want to keep as many people employed and businesses running as possible and to really kind of curb the, the, how severe this pandemic is for our, for our businesses. So we evaluated a number of communities from across the country that have put in these small business relief funds, some of them have been loans, loan programs, some of them have been grant programs and they range and vary in scope. But we're seeing them become more and more popular as community, real, communities realize that the SBA alone won't be enough to minimize the impact of this. You all should have received the document from me that really kind of outlined in general the scope of what we are proposing. What we are doing is targeting to have a $750,000 fund that is both publicly and privately funded and on the public side, looking towards you all as Board of Commissioners, the City Council for Douglasville, the Development Authority as public partners, as private partners, looking to the Chamber as a partner in that fund and then talking to some other larger businesses that are in a position to help assist our, our target small businesses. And so when I speak to target small businesses, we're talking about businesses with employees between 2 to 25 employees that have been in business for at least one year as of March 1st, 2020. Those businesses that are current on their Secretary of State's filings, obviously Douglas County licensing and property taxes and, and what have you. In that the, the funds could be used towards working capital to assist the business operation. We would look, we're targeting grants that would, that would be capped at $5,000 per company. Now, a little bit of reality in this, there are 5,000 plus businesses incorporated in Douglas County. If we have a $750,000 fund, we can only reach and we, and if all, if we issue $5,000 grants to every awardee, we will only be able assisting 150 companies. If you do the math and you try and apply that to all of those businesses, it would exceed the, the, the budget. So we're trying to be realistic in what we can do, but be able to, as, as we mentioned, you know, get those businesses who have, from a preference standpoint, we're not able to get funding from the PPP that are Douglas County-based businesses that are all, obviously all current with 2 to 25 employees. We have laid out the, a skeleton of what the, what the communications and process would look like. We have already obtained the, all of the incorporated companies in Douglas County through both the city and county's databases, so we have all that information. We would get mailers out to all of those businesses informing them that a fund would go live and we would also use social media platforms and email platforms to ensure that if you are a business in Douglas that you didn't miss it because we only chose one media format to, to communicate through. Our goal would be to go live with the application on May 13th. That application would be solely electronic, everything would be done online, all documents would be submitted online and, and all of those applications would be time stamped. So we would have that application go live May 13th with a, a goal to stay live for 10 days and upon meeting all of the eligibility requirements that we lay out in the beginning and if they, they met all those requirements, then it goes to a first come, first served basis. So all those electronic applications would be electronically time stamped, so we would know when those came in and when we get to the point that we've, we've got, we've capped out our funds, then we would close, close the funding. We would also work with our bank, Service First Bank, to open up ACH processing, so we would attain the, the necessary information from the awardees as far as account information with a preference being that we do everything through a direct deposit. If not, then we have to go through checks and just like how those things are working out with the federal government, it's best to go with the ACH process, just the check process will take a little bit longer. That is really the, the gist of the program. Sarah Ray is on the, on the line as well. Sarah, if there's anything- Sarah, if there's anything else that you want to add to that, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thanks. Thanks, Chris. I think the only other thing that I would add is just in kind of being on, on the front lines of dealing with our small businesses over the last six weeks or so is that this is something that is very much needed in our community. It is something that, you know, I mean, since the SBA kind of announced that the funds were maxed out last Friday, I've probably gotten 50 plus phone calls, countless emails on people that don't have a direction on, you know, what, what kind of funding options there are. So if this is something that our community can come together to provide to our businesses that, that are here, I think that it's something that would be greatly appreciated. And just really think that it's, it's definitely, the need is definitely there. And there are some businesses that I have spoken with that are completely directionless on how to navigate all of this, you know, so I definitely just completely am supportive on behalf of the business community that I've been talking to that this is definitely, it's definitely something that I would love to be considered by the Board of Commissioners. So, thank you.
Yes, and we would propose, you know, as I mentioned, a fund of 750,000. We would, we're requesting that the Board of Commissioners would consider contributing 200,000 to that fund. You are the first kind of official request that we have made. We've, we've had kind of soft conversations to this point. We'll be asking council next week for a contribution as well. And we've got some private feelers out there right now, one of which I should hear back from later this afternoon about their ability to contribute to the fund as well and, and looking, targeting a six-figure contribution to the fund.
Okay. Are, are you finished, Chris and Sarah? That's your presentation? Okay, certainly as we encroach a public-private partnership, that's what I'll call it. You, I was just getting ready to ask, what is the ask? You said 200,000 from the county? And then you said you'll be engaging in conversations with the city this week as well. Okay. Okay, I think one question I have, will there be a contribution from the Chamber and the Development Authority? Are you planning, I heard you say to get up to six, to that six-figure, $1 million deal? So is there a plan or contribution on your end as well?
Yeah, so for the Development Authority, we would look at, our, our goal is to try and kind of fill the gap. But we would look at a minimal contribution of 100,000 to go in.
And on behalf of the Chamber, we're still having a conversation with our, it's at our executive board level right now as far as if and, and what level we want to contribute. So it's an undetermined number at this point.
Yeah, and I, and I do echo you, you both, Sarah and Chris. Our, our small businesses are the heartbeat of our community and really appreciate everything that they do, especially being a daughter of a 50-year business owner. I understand what goes on behind the veil with these small businesses. Board of Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions?
I have a chair.
Yes. Vice Chair Robinson?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be succinct. Again, all of this is related. Obviously, this is a well-planned agenda today. It's all about appropriations in light of our current COVID. What, what do we do? What do we do for our citizens? It, it, I mean, everything is not about self. I, I get self-preservation, but self-preservation is that it, it includes our neighbors, right? So it, it, it to be inclusive, not an exclusion. And, and while I recognize that there's limitations, we have to have the conversation about the limitations. It should not be ever a decision about either or, a me versus you. It's how, how do we all, you know, how do we, how do we, how do we get through this moment? Obviously, all of us have been involved in conversations of Board Commissioners with our respective circle of influence, our circle of, of, of companies that we've come in contact with, whether they're nonprofit or for-profit. There's been questions that have been asked, so what will the board do? And again, we're going to just stay in our lane. We recognize that we're not the fit. We can't print money. We, 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 we don't have that type of capacity. We recognize that we're not the state. We're a moderate-sized county at the local level, but there, there is something that we can do and that we should do. And it's just a matter of what will we do? So that being said, with that as a, as a backdrop, obviously, I brought this up about three or four weeks ago. And because it's the speed of decision-making that we have to do. You don't, you don't have all day. You don't have three months to go through nothing. If Congress can pass $2 trillion or $6 trillion, surely we can too. Right? If, if five people can't get in a room, in fact, what is in the best interest of 150,000 people versus Congress that has to deal with 300 million? We can do this, right? And we can process this. We, we don't need a bunch of advisors. In certain moments, it's like, no, you're on your own. You have to take a position and, and be able to make a decision on the best half of, of the citizenry at large. It's the collective will of the board. That being said, obviously, this is something that I followed. I, I don't have to get into, you know, banking and entrepreneurship, which is, which is my background. But Chris, I, I, my question is really to you, which is I've always had a concern about when we take on services and when we want to do things, the question is always, how will you deliver it? It's one thing for the Board of Commissioners to appropriate. It's another about the delivery. You can sell anything, but can you deliver? And so I've always been concerned about scale. We've had this conversation internally for the public. And we've had serious debate and one-offs and I've always, I've been hesitant. As much as I want to do it, I'm like, the administration is not in the business of doing this. The only person I believe that probably could pull this off would be like the task commissioner that had an infrastructure place to do this. We just don't have it here in Douglas County. So I'm always looking to partner with people who are already in place to be able to do this. Obviously, banks, obviously, I'm, I'm totally against loans. I, I, I don't believe in putting people further in debt. I mean, you already put them in debt by pushing out foreclosures, I mean, delaying all these things. I mean, you're, we're stacking up. If you're going to help them, help them. So I appreciate the fact that the grant is sort of what's being offered up. You don't need to put people in further bondage and trying to say that I'm helping you, but I'm going to put you in bondage. And nor do I want to be in the business of collecting small loans against our, our, our citizens. No way. I want to be in that business. So Chris, from an infrastructure perspective and recognizing, even if you said that we're only going to be able to help 150 people, the capacity, people are still going to apply and it's a grant. So how are you going to do this? How are y'all going to scale up? And you may not have an answer because again, we're okay with appropriations with the condition that you got the infrastructure in place. You know, in other words, we, we can always put that in, but talk to us about that. Because obviously, it's one thing to have your, you know, can, can you pull it off? Answer that first.
Sure. So the, the first piece is, is one, you know, getting, getting communications out and being very clear with, with the communications are. You know, what are the expectations for qualification? What are the documents that are necessary to be provided for, for said application? Ensuring that whatever system we use can stand up to the amount of, I guess, individuals that are actively in it. So we minimize the crash like SBA had on, on, on their system. And so it's putting those, one, communicating out first, you know, what the requirements are and making sure we have our system in place for receiving the applications. We then are simplifying the requirements and we're removing subjectivity from the process. And so we're making it a very objective process where the requirements are laid out at the very beginning. You check the boxes if all those requirements are met, the documents satisfy, and that we're not interpreting information within the documentation. So we would have a small group committee, I believe in the document I listed, there are kind of members of that committee that consists of both Chamber Board and Development Authority Board. We would welcome if you would like to have someone else from representing the county in that process, representing the city in that process as well, so that we have, you know, all those hands kind of, they're looking at everything and making sure we're checking things off. So that's the, the first part. The second part is on our backend internal work. We have, from a staff standpoint, have about teams between both the Development Authority and Chamber, about 10 people. So we would have all of our FAQs in place, how, you know, to communicate, what phone numbers to dial in order to, you know, get further information. But that, most of that will then lead everyone back to one single source. Here's our website. Here's everything you need to know. We're going to try and make all of that done upfront before anything ever goes out and before that application goes live. So that's the reason we're not proposing that this starts next week. And we're giving ourselves at least three weeks to have all of that in place. And then once again, from the point of distributing funds, our preference is to work through ACH. And we will work with our partner at Service First Bank in order to issue the funds and then mail the checks out. The good thing now is that we have all of the licensing information from both you all in the city and the county. And so we're making sure we're getting everyone, we're getting to everyone that has a valid business in Douglas.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I'm, I want to acknowledge the fact that you, you, the Board of Commissioners, I appreciate you guys helping strengthen the Development Authority's board by, by adding bankers because I think that was always something that was critical. So I, I have assurance that these guys have thought through this on, from that side. So I appreciate that. My next question becomes more of a, you've got the city and the county, and I, I, I separate them separately. We, we, we recognize that the Development Authority tends to be industry and the Chamber tends to be its, its membership. Then you have the, the city versus the county. One of the things I want to make, give assurance is that if the county puts up dollars, I want to make sure that those businesses that are unincorporated get their fair share. Likewise, I, I can't speak for the city, but I'm, I'm sure they would recognize and acknowledge that sentiment. How do we balance that? Because again, if the county was going to do it, it would do it properly. And then I'm, I'm looking for balance. I'm, I'm looking for, how do you assure that the public doesn't perceive? It's always about, Chris, we've had this conversation about optics, right? So how do we, in this moment, that, that, that it just doesn't, we don't self-select? And I, I get the criteria. I get first come, first served. But how do we, like, we're, we're putting boundaries around, okay, you've got to be one year older or two businesses versus having one employee and being open six months. I'm just making this up. But how, how do we find a balance to make sure that, okay, because we do a good job of separating county versus city and taxation and all these un-ink bonds and all that, right? To ensure that people get their fair share. I think likewise with this case, there needs to be an acknowledgement. And I just want my peers to weigh in on this after you answer it, Chris. And I have one more question, which is how do we deal with that? And I, I don't know, we have to solve it now. But I want to make sure that the un-ink people, the people in the county, get their fair share, that it doesn't inherently get concentrated, even though a lot of, obviously, companies may be in the city proper and it's a dual footprint. Still, how do we, how do we address that?
Yeah, that, that's a, a great question. We definitely have the information of who's, you know, licensed in the county versus who's licensed in the city. It's not something that we have to put thought into at this point, but I would put it as something that we need to put some thought to, to figure out how to, you know, how do we accomplish that?
Okay, so that will be one of my conditions. And my last question, Matt Chair, deals with, I, I appreciate, you know, this, this is something I, I, again, I just, I, I can sit back and observe because I've been here, done that. I, I've raised a million three myself personally. I, I understand what it means to do, you know, and to be in this place. So here's my thought, which is what, what we're doing is, and I appreciate we're trying to help. And this is, it's, it's one thing to give a person a fish. It's another to teach them. All right, so that's the other side of me. Like, okay, but we tell them where to go, but I think what's missing here is the academic part. I'm, 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 where's my Mercer? Like, okay, these people, I mean, why aren't they, I mean, it can be tied to a scholarship that says, okay, guys, y'all need to retool. You, there, there is something that I, I, I want to just plant the seed. If I were doing this, education would be key. You need to go through this process, not just about the application, but you, you need a, a, a higher level of thinking. You need to revisit your business plan. You need to rethink this because everybody's not going to get this. So part of this is, it should be conditional with just, you know, if you've got 150, let's say it's 1,000 people apply. 1,000 need to go through the process to, and, and I get it's the speed of it. I, I, I get the speed. We're, we're just throwing fish. That's cool. We're giving fish. I got no problem with that. But I want to teach you how to fish because again, here's a chance for us all to reset, right? There is an academic, if, if you want to really strengthen the population and, and to the point, it's not about emotion. It's like, no, this is business. It's, it's, it's like, okay, guys, when you walk in there, are you really ready? Have you really thought through how you're going to come back with this thing, right? It's just not, okay, I got to pay my bills. It's like, okay, have you thought through? You had to maneuver. It's six and 10, you know, six feet and 10 people and it ain't going nowhere. We, we got a lot of service business. So it's one of those where I would have liked to have seen the academic. I don't think we have to solve it now, but that's something that I'm, I, I will handle separately. Chris and Sarah, you both know, I'm strong proponent of entrepreneurship, but it has to be education-based, right? And, and so again, fish versus, you know, giving a fish versus teaching a fish, I think it's something that, there is a difference. But I get the speed in which we're trying to do is really help. And so I commend you guys for bringing this forward. And it's not, it's just something for me to think about and for my peers to think about, okay, where's the academic part? To ensure that, again, we can strengthen many more than just the ones who are going to qualify for this. So even if I don't get the, the grant, the, the commission, the, the county do something that gave a greater good. Academics is free. Man, you can do these virtual online. I can teach a class. I just don't, I don't have time for that. But it's just one of those like, look, y'all, y'all can pull this off. Make the county better. By, or, or the city proper by giving them an academic scholarship to allow them to be able to, many people to be benefited. But again, everybody can't get the money. I won't belabor it. I, I've made my point. I went a bit long. Now, Matt Chair, I'm going to yield to the floor to my commission. I'm done. Thank you. We're good.
Thank you so much. Any other comments from the Board of Commissioners? Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Guyer. Commissioner Guyer?
Okay, first of all, Congress may not be finished with what they're going to do. I think this may be premature if they can get Speaker Pelosi back to the table. I think you may see a supplement to what they've already done as far as the, the small businesses. Another thing, across the board, 5,000, you're talking about for a two-employee business getting 5,000 and one that has, how many, how, how far up, how many employees?
25, two to 25.
Okay, 25 business, 25 employee business getting the same amount that a two-employee business gets. Is that right? Because you said 5,000 across the board.
No, we, we, we actually said, we said up to 5,000. You know, we're trying to minimize the, the subject, the subjectivity in it. It's one of the things that we have discussed internally. We had, had the discussion on Friday. One of our committee members, Shandron Pemberton, brought that point up about within the questions, how do we structure it in the way that we do have tiers? But we just, we, we didn't settle on that just yet.
And as Commissioner Robinson alluded to, most of the businesses are in the city. And you're asking us to contribute 200,000 and you haven't even talked to the city. Or, or they haven't committed to anything. So I have a problem there because when we do, we do our service, what is it, that we have to do every five years, every 10 years, service delivery?
SDF.
I assure you, because most of the businesses are in the city, they get a bigger portion of the sales tax. And they, they get the business license from the, the, the businesses. We do not. And that's why Commissioner Robinson was referring to the unincorporated area. That, that's probably, I doubt that we, we, do we have 25% in the unincorporated area? So I question you on that and I question this process. But I also question whether you have the legal authority to issue checks to people and loans to people. I, I don't know that you, you can do that. You are bureaucratic branch of our government. You're not the government. So maybe Kenny Bernard, he's on the conference call here. If he could weigh in on that, whether you have the ability to do this with taxpaying money. Kenny? We lost him.
I, I'm here.
Do you?
And not, not in my mood.
Understand what they were talking about.
Yeah, you know, I, I think-
Yeah, you know, I, I think until the, the devil's in the details about what the actual administration is. I, I think whether or not governments can do X, Y, and Z depends on the, whatever the final strategy. I think what they're laying out is kind of a hybrid structure that's not been finalized. But my guess is the Development Authority with Joe Fowler over there and Sarah with her outside counsel and us and the city's lawyers, there's probably a way to do whatever they're trying to do. It's just a matter of getting it set up technically legal. The question before y'all right now is really one of politics and, and y'all's discretion about whether you're going to participate or not. But how they do it, sort of an end game result. And any, any kind of contribution should be subject to it being finally legally approved, whatever the structure actually ends up being.
And, and to that, to that point, Development Authorities, the, the, the way that we were created through the state, we're created for the means of conveying, you know, obviously one conveying the property tax component, but we also convey grants as well. And so we're, we're, we're not, we're not an entity of the county, we're a state entity. I mean, however, our legislation is, you know, obviously we're, Kenny probably know the better way to say this, but you know, you all appoint our board members, but we are a state entity. And so we're, we're looked at a little, little differently than solely just how the county does it. And I don't know the difference, different ways, you know, and on all that, how that works. But for example, when someone gets a discretionary grant, let's say from the state, those grant funds flow through the Development Authority because the Development Authorities are allowed to then convey those funds over on behalf, you know, of the state. So that, that's kind of the closest example that I can give that, what we have today.
This just seems a little different to me, and maybe it's just me, but this is taking tax dollars and you dispersing tax dollars, our tax dollars that we collect from the people here in the county. And maybe the legal people are going to have to see it that, work out the details. But right now, I think we need to wait and see. And the Chamber of Commerce, we give them thousands of dollars from the hotel motel tax to operate. And I don't know if they can use hotel motel tax or whatever to apply to this. But the, the Chamber of Commerce, we're all members and the Development Authority is all members, the city's all members and everything. So we should be able to get a commitment from them before we commit. They work with the businesses more than anybody. But first of all, I think we need to wait and see what the Democrats, if they're, come back to the table and the, the second half of the SBA loan package is, will get passed. I think there's a probability it will be. So I think we're putting the cart before the horse, so to speak. And I'd like to see what the other people are going to commit before we commit. Because most of the businesses are in the city. And we give a lot of tax dollars to the Chamber to help them in their budget. I want to see what they, they're bringing to the table. And I really think the Development Authority could bring more than 100,000. Because we give you 350, what, 350,000? And that's just from my memory, I can't remember exactly. But I don't think you're going to help enough people with what you're talking about. You're going to make a lot of other people mad. If it's, if you can't accommodate all of them that did not, have not already gotten the help through the SBA, then what do you do about the, the people that fall through the cracks? I, I think this is just premature to bring this to this board at this time. And besides that, I feel like we're having a rush on the bank, a run on the bank here this morning. Everybody's wanting all this, all this money. And we're, we're really going to be talking about cutting, cutting. I hadn't heard anybody say anything about cutting yet. So we've got to wait and we've got to have our priorities. And I hope Mr. Corbin will help us along those lines. He, he can see the bigger picture and he's unbiased. He's, he's not playing politics. He just puts it bluntly, that's what I, that's what I like about him. Excuse me, I got allergies. With that, I'll yield back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Gaita. This evening, again, I, I would like to just reiterate and stress that we will be talking about cutting finances this evening at 2:00 PM. So that'll be our next topic of discussion. But I do, what I do appreciate about the meeting today, everything is a comprehensive approach. So we won't have to keep coming back and forth. That was made very clear last Thursday, I believe, in our special call meeting. And I appreciate the Board of Commissioners for delaying the discussion. I have a deep appreciation for it and respect for this today. So we could just bundle this package together and keep moving. I agree with you, Commissioner, you, you know, about wanting to see what the other entities are paying. I believe his request from us is $200,000. And at this time, certainly would like as that pivot to Mark to see if we could roll that up in the, in, in the packet. But let me talk about some things that we are doing. I don't want to sit here and give the citizens an impression that we're just sitting here taking our general fund and just dubbing out money. We are doing some very aggressive things behind the scenes that we are, we certainly are at the forefront of the stimulus care act, CARES Act funding, which will address those counties with a population of under 500,000. So I just sent some information to Washington. We FedExed some information the other day, wanted to make sure that Douglas County is at the forefront. Also working with ACCG so we can make sure we get some funding. We are working with FEMA. We feel that we will get some reimbursement, reimbursement from FEMA. Commissioner Carthen mentioned HEROES Act, we are looking into that. We're, we have a stimulus package for our fire and EMS department. Mark and Tiffany are working on that. The state support, I've requested 2 million from the state. Our senior and agent group, we have a, we have an ARC grant that's under, under wraps right now. Dr. Gilchrist is working on that. So I'm just not sitting here doing nothing. Mark, if you could just talk about some of those things that Tiffany, I was trying to see if I could get her on the line. Tell the Board of Commissioners what she's doing to push some of these grants through for us. Mark, if you could try and.
You pretty much covered it, Madam Chair.
Okay. So I know she's working under your direction, but can you tell us some of the things? For example, Friday, she did something Friday and we had to get this, I believe we FedExed a, a package to Washington.
Yeah, so Friday, that was the, that was the CARES Act for 500 communities with 500,000 or more employee, I mean, citizens, excuse me. But we were getting emails late Friday, it was after 5:00, from ACCG. They recommended that everybody submit their packet. So yeah, she, we did that last second, it was due at, I think, 11:59 Friday night and we got that covered.
Okay, so we are doing some things behind the scene, Commissioner Gaita. And then also you brought something to the forefront today about the SPOLOST, perhaps, that could be utilized for supplies, masks and PPEs for the fire department. So I'm so glad to have all our brains at the table as we try to think through this emergent process. Very, with that being said, Mark, any other questions or comments from you, Chris and Sarah? Thank you for coming before us this morning.
Well, we'll, we'll just add, you know, to Commissioner Robinson's point, we did lay out there the, the, the need to put technical resources in place, looking at one existing programs that we have today, partnering with Mercer. So we did kind of lay that out in the process that, you know, it's not just if you don't get the funds, even if you do get the funds, but just also presenting what resources there are available to support small businesses. And, and we're working on some other things that were started prior to COVID-19 going into effect, going into place, in the shelter in place, that will help boost up our entrepreneurial efforts, which is something that is a more of a long-term focus of ours as well. We will also, you know, be responsive and address the, the questions that were raised today as far as proportionality. We will also look at where, you know, what others are able to contribute to, to the fund. You know, it, it might be one of those where I think a lot of, you know, entities are looking at the same thing, you know, what is being contributed. But as I mentioned, you know, at the beginning, more and more communities are putting together funds to support their local businesses. And even with the SBA piece kind of going into play, there are a ton of needs. We recognize that SBA may have another round, but we also recognize that there are still a number of businesses that are falling through the cracks. And so we, you know, whatever that round might be, you know, there are still our opportunities to serve our, our local businesses and do whatever we can to keep afloat our local economy, to, to continue to have tax dollars generated in our community, to come back into funding the revenues that we're seeing shortfalls in. So it's really just doing our support. And one last point, I'm going to Fulton County just issued a fund last week. They were committing a million and a half dollars from the Fulton County Government, and I believe a million and a half from the Fulton County Development Authority. They're doing their program in the, in the form of a loan fund. It's a partnership with ACE, ACE. They're partnering with ACE. They opened that fund, just to, just to talk about the need that's out there. That fund opened up on Thursday afternoon at 3:00. It was shut down yesterday afternoon because they had already had an overwhelming number of applications of that program. So it is true that the need is there. And as are the bankers on our board pointed out as well, there definitely is a need from local businesses despite of the SBA program. So thank you all for your time and consideration this morning and now this afternoon. And, and I appreciate all that you do for our, our community and our organizations.
Chris, before you go, this is Commissioner Carthen. I just, I do have a couple of questions for you. Have you or Sarah Ray found out if there are any businesses that are on the brink of closure? Like, have you guys had a chance to get that information and compile that information? My second question for you is why the May 13th application date? Like, what's, what's the, what, what got you to May, May 13th?
I'll, I'll let Sarah answer the, the business question.
Yeah. Yes, so to answer your question, Commissioner Carthen, we have had a three-part survey that we have set out since COVID-19 became a, a thing. And we have data from over 300 businesses. And, and it kind of goes through the last couple of weeks. And as far as what they're facing, how we can support them, you know, what resources they need. And in the most current version, which we launched about a week ago, it even asks, you know, what have you applied for? You know, if it was the SBA loan, if it was the Triple P, you know, have you received that funding? Those kind of things. We are asking if people have had to lay off. Earlier in the game, it was, are you contemplating layoffs? And we went through each of those individual surveys and then worked with the Development Authority. And Breezy Straighten reached out to each of those companies that had clicked that button to say that they were facing layoffs, to talk through that process with them. So I guess the long and short is that, yes, we have been compiling the data and responding as needed. I haven't heard of any specific business closings to date, just people that are sheltering in place and monitoring those, those kind of needs. So we do have the data. We made phone calls to all 650 of our chamber member businesses. So those are, you know, majority of those are included. If we, if we could get them to take the survey, we've definitely got some of their information. And then just as I've been talking to people that aren't chamber members, which that's, it's a large number of businesses, I've been kind of asking the same question. So we've been trying to capture that data, same thing, like in, into our results. So, so we do have some data, but I haven't heard of anybody that officially closed their doors, at least not that I've been known, you know, that's been told to me.
And, and to your, your question about the, the dates, it was really a, a process of just kind of walking through timelines and our abilities to get applications set up, mailers designed and, and sent out. So really, we're just kind of walking through a timeline of that and think, and looking at May 13th kind of being the most logical date that we could get started. You know, that day could be, you know, May 18th. But, you know, we also didn't want to wait too long in the process as well. But we wanted to give ourselves enough time to get through approvals and get all the communications and materials out.
Okay. And I just, oh, sorry, no, go ahead.
I'm going to add to what Chris had mentioned. You know, I'm very appreciative of the Board of Commissioners. Chairman Jackson Jones reached out to me at the, in the very early stages of when the SBA put out the EIDL loan information and that the, the county actually sent out to all business license holders in the county, a letter that was by myself and the chairman with the information on the SBA loan. And I guess, you know, as far as pushing out, as far, not, not launching this until May 13th was, I know just from those letters, like, I'm still receiving phone calls from people receiving those letters and we sent those probably four or five weeks ago. So I think that to make sure that everybody has the information at their disposal, it has to be at least a couple of weeks, even just to get it through the snail mail process. Because again, you know, by the time some of those business owners were getting the information in the mail and, and/or being able to apply, one, there was new information that was already out, that wasn't even on the information that we sent because things had moved so quickly. And there was, there were new options. So I think that I completely support what Chris is saying, that we need to give ourselves a little bit of, of a window to make sure that we can have all of those questions answered, have everything teed up to be able to make sure and that everybody can have that information shared. So that was just kind of a lesson learned on the backside from sending out those letters was that, you know, the, the mail doesn't always run in two days as it used to. So just making sure everybody can have that information too.
And that, that's understood. And, and Chris Humphrey, could you also speak to, I know you said 750,000 is your goal, but if you don't get to that goal, are you still looking at going ahead and implementing this?
Yeah, we, you know, that, that's a, that's a great question. We've still, the need is still there. We would like to provide as much as we possibly can, you know, for that. And, you know, our initial, you know, kind of target was, you know, let's say 500,000. So, and that was kind of before we had the, the thought to looking at private, you know, business contribution as well. And so, you know, if we, if, if we got 400,000 publicly and then another 100,000, you know, let's say between Development Authority and Chamber or any combination thereof, you know, I, I believe and would hope between county, city, Chamber, Development Authority, we could hit the 500,000. And then you throw a private sector on top of that, you know, a, a, a greater goal being the 750. So if we fall short of the 500,000, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll have to evaluate that. But we wouldn't take funds and then decide not to go live. We would make that decision well ahead of that.
Got you. And just for my other Board of Commissioners, this, this kind of affects us all. Whether those businesses are in the city or in the county, if those businesses are not open, we don't get sales tax. We don't get sales tax, then we can't meet the service deliveries that we need for the county. So it, it really is, it's, it's like, you know, we feed one so that we can get fed. And if we don't feed one, we don't get fed. So it, it really is, this economic development lifecycle really affects us all. So I can't say that my colleagues will give you 200,000, I can't say they will give you 20,000. Of course, each one of us has a vote, but just, you know, we have to look at it in totality. We wish we didn't, you know, have to be in this situation, but since we are in this situation, I think we should look at, you know, totally really considering this. And it, and it was part of the needs that I put in my resolution, Chris. So I was thinking about that. I was thinking about CSB, CSB was already in my, you know, in, in that. So again, no, we can't meet the needs of everybody, no, we can't stand up every business, but we are a community and, and we're neighbors, right? And if we help each other, somewhere along the line, we will get help. So I'm hoping. So I'm hoping that we all consider this. But would that matter to you?
Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthen.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, yes, just, just, just one and I'll, and I'll be brief. And thanks to Sarah and Chris for providing this information. And I don't think, I think all of us know that this is going to affect every business. This, this COVID-19 touched everybody, everything. Every, it didn't, it didn't neglect itself from anybody. So everybody got touched by this. But the question though is, how do we, how do we navigate this? How do we come back online as our economics come back online? And, and how do we do this? I don't have the answer, but I, I'm asking my first question to you guys. Who came up with the $200,000 from the Board of Commissioners? Well, this is a random number that we just came up with. That's my first question. How did we come about this 200,000? Are we looking for the city to do 200,000? We're looking for, are we going to do 200,000? Or are we just looking in general and hope that we can kind of start with two and get to seven? Is that kind of the hopeful thought process in this?
Yeah, great, great question, sir. And I appreciate your comments. As, as I mentioned earlier, you know, to Commissioner Carthen, you know, we originally targeted, you know, a $500,000, you know, fund. And, you know, just trying to come up with some logical, you know, contribution amount. My initial, you know, you know, was just kind of looking at a range. But, you know, the request there is if you, if you had a three-part contribution, city, Douglas County, city, Douglasville Development Authority, you know, logically get to, to $500,000. And that was really kind of the logic, you know, behind, you know, kind of putting it together. And thus, you know, making the request. If you all decide to do something less than that, you know, we will, you know, we will do our best to work, we'll work with whatever contribution, you know, could be made. But we believe that, you know, to optimize this and, you know, get out as much as we possibly can, you know, we would hope that 200,000 be contributed from the county.
And I'm, I'm not saying that's a bad number. I'm just curious to know kind of where did it come from? And then is that the same request from the city that we're asking?
Yes, we've made, like I said, we haven't, this is our first formal request. My initial conversations have kind of been initially started with, with Mark and Marcia, just kind of here's what we're thinking as we're putting this together. But we'll make, you know, the same request and we'll ask that of the council next week.
Got it. And that's okay. And I guess we've looked at, I mean, there are many grants that are out there. I know the SBA muddies are all gone. For those, for those who got it, got it. For those who didn't, you know, wow, I'm, I'm hoping that Congress and others go back and try to revisit that. The Triple P, I mean, so that, the money that's, that goes out, it goes, it gets grabbed and kind of consumed pretty quickly. Are we really educating our local businesses like, okay, guys, this money's going to come and you've got to be prepared. Here's the documentations or here's the things that I think you'll need. I mean, so are we preparing, you know, the local businesses on how to capture the moment? Because if not, they'll miss the moment.
Yeah, and, and to, you know, and that dovetails back into Sarah's point when they first sent out, you know, information to businesses about all the resources at the beginning. Where we got the business list from both city and county staff on all the businesses, their, their addresses and everything. So we will start out with, you know, mailers and then social media. We'd love to use Douglas County Happenings. We love to use the cities, you know, means you all, you know, have your newsletters that go out to your constituents. Use all of those things and do it in a manner that, you know, we're not, it's not going live the day that the, that the information is put out there. We're giving everyone time to, you know, let it cycle through, let it cycle through the postal service, let it cycle through, you know, more Facebook shares and all those things. So that when it does go live, we have, we believe we've done our level best to reach everyone. I mean, it's off the goal with that.
Okay, okay. Sarah?
I can also add to that, Commissioner Mitchell. I know there's an, actually, there's a grant that goes live at three o'clock today through the U.S. Chamber Foundation. So I know we have as much heads up as we can get on our side, at least from a chamber perspective, as far as launching that information, we've been trying to be as proactive as we can. And as we've been talking to these businesses that aren't, you know, might not necessarily get our chamber information or have gotten it in the past, I've been making sure and adding them all to our communication. So, you know, we're continuing to build out that pipeline of communication. But I know that with that grant specifically, we, we went in and created our own marketing plan. And on Thursday, the email went out to our membership. We did a press release that hopefully went through the Sentinel over the weekend or today. So we're trying to do it as much as we can. And luckily, you know, it's on, I mean, it's all, it's still a chaotic world. But I feel like, you know, especially with the EIDL loan, like it was just thrown out there. And, you know, everybody was scrambling to kind of try and figure it out, the same thing with the Triple P. So I think people are being smarter now. Knowing from the ready, ready fire aim approach, and that, that just creates a lot more chaos. And so people are being smarter. I know Facebook has a grant that's coming out in a couple of weeks or no, by the end of this week. It's nothing our community's eligible for, but, but they kind of had said, hey, we're putting this out. Stay tuned for more information. So I think that people are switching this mentality because they, they've seen how, you know, chaotic it can get on the backside. And the only other thing I'll add is that as far as creating a strategy for people to, you know, return into, you know, return to work as the president has communicated that. And, 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 you know, help our businesses. I keep saying that, you know, they're all, you know, they've gotten in this big hole and trying to dig their way out. We are currently working on at the chamber, kind of strategies to help people, one, return to work. And then two, you know, we have a sustainability program that we've had in place the last five years and kind of re-engineering that to be less of a sustainability program into more of a recovery program. So we are working on those right now, just kind of waiting to see when we all and what returning to work will look like for our businesses.
I know, I know. Well, listen, I mean, we can only try to be as proactive as we can and understand that this COVID-19 touched everybody, everybody. So I can just only wish you the best and, and I get what the needs are. We just got to decide as a commission which direction we move in. So thank you guys again. Now you're back, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. All right, Board of Commissioners, thank you so much, Chris and Sarah, for your presentation. I'm going to move on to tab number four. And then, then from there, I will check with our county attorney to see if we need to go into executive session. Tab number four is authorization. I'm sorry, tab number five is resolution to approve COVID-19 emergency response funding. Mark, I know you have the resolution before you. Thank you, Commissioner Carthen, for formulating this resolution in a comprehensive manner. I know I brought hazardous pay for our staff for, for our special call meeting. And we had a conversation at that time, let's just bundle everything together, take a comprehensive approach. And then we would, and that would allow us to move forward because we, in this moment, we need to go right now. And to keep coming back and forth to the table makes no sense. I believe in, I say this wholeheartedly, we're not Atlanta, but we are a moderate-sized county. And I believe that what, at the end of the day, when we all rest our heads on a pillow, on our pillow, I want to make sure that we've done everything we can in our, in our ability, in our capability to support all the citizens of Douglas County and our employees through this moment. So that's very important to me. So, Mark, would you take over?
Yes, ma'am. Hold on one second. Yeah, so the resolution, the way it's currently written, written is for allocation of $1.185 million for the purpose of providing emergency assistance pertaining to our community affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. So the three categories, first responders and frontline hazard pay, 535,000. And that's based on 552 employees that were confirmed with the department heads, I think last Thursday or Friday. Number two, community stability needs for seniors, youth, homeless, transient families, CSB, utilization of businesses, 325,000. Health stability needs. And that would include, but not be limited to, testing kits, site facilities, equipment, cleaning supplies and services. And that was 325,000. Those add up to $1,185,000.
Okay. Any questions from the board or any comments regarding this resolution?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Vice Chairman Robinson.
All right. So, I mean, I get the buckets and I, and again, I like you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the Board of Commissioners recognizing, at least giving this consideration. Yes, we are moderate size. And while we know there's a $10 need and we've got a dollar, we may only have a quarter to put on this. Or even yet, we, we may put five on it. We need to do something, though. We, we, we have to take some action to, to acknowledge that we all, we all have to give. It can't always be about extraction and taxation and, and all about us as administration. Yes, we will take care of the administration, but we only exist because of the public. We only exist because of the public. So, right, don't get me wrong, frontline, got you. First responders, got you. But there's a balancing act. And to, to not be so detached from the public in the sense that, don't we see them? It's not about emotion. This is the business of the people. It is about dollars. It's always about the money, always. So it's just one of those like, okay, but in this moment, I'm not going to make it an emotional argument. It's like, no, it's about money. And it's about who gets what and who doesn't. And so are, is there a consideration being done? So I appreciate backing up on this. This is the one time, you know, 100 years is on our watch. And the question becomes, and, and in a moment of crisis, you're measured by your leadership. Can you rise to this moment? Right, they turn off the earphones. No, you don't have no advisors coming in. You ain't getting nobody spotting you points. You ain't getting nobody scripting. Make a decision, take position. And so on this one, I, as I look at the resolution, well done. I, I thought it was thoughtful. Thank you, Madam Chair, for, for at least allowing us to weigh in. We recognized that we, you know, our commitment was to give you what you needed. Let's, let's, let's get out the way. You got work to do, but we want to make sure that you're empowered properly. And you, you don't have to come back and just like try to squeeze stuff out like, no, we get it. So I, I appreciate my peers for, for stepping up and, and being able to frame this. So obviously, we're just appropriating. That, that's our role, like Congress, like the General Assembly. And it's up to the administration to figure out sort of the details in which we can concur with. So I think these buckets are appropriate. Two things, as we blend this, as we bring it home, this says that, okay, and, and I'm okay with my peers weighing in and how you guys saw this. But based on the presentation I just heard, which is obviously small business and maybe county ministry, where would this fall at? I mean, I know it's not frontline, the public safety guys, but which bucket would small business fall in based on this presentation? Mark? County Minister? Would it fall? Hello?
Mark? Sorry.
That's okay.
My microphone's off.
That's all right.
So that would fall under number two, community stability needs.
All right, community stability. And then obviously the CSB would be in bucket number one?
No, it would be in bucket number two as well, the way it's written.
They both, okay. All right. So you, you make sure if I, if I'm doing this right. So CSB was 100,000 per month asked for the next three months. If we, and again, it's up to, we can, we can cap this, guys. You know, the language is up to, and it can be contingent upon everybody coming back and validating the details. In other words, I'm just trying to frame the buckets, but they're still going to have to validate this. So it's not like we're going to write the checks tomorrow if you approve this. It's just simply like, okay, if there's still some holes that you have, I think we just want to get the money out of the way. So, so then you, you've answered the question on that, 100,000 per month, that's 300,000. And then we just ask up to 200,000 for obviously small business. Does that, does that fit in 1.1? Or no?
No, sir, not all of it.
All right. So we need to smooth that out in my, my position. And so that's all I want to make sure is that if in fact we're considering what both presentations were given. And again, the whole point is I, I was involved in like, no, you need to get before us now. There's no later, it's right now. So I was involved in both of those conversations last week. And it's like, no, you got to get before the full, full board because they have a right to, to weigh in on this. No, no backdoor deals, no committee meetings in front of the full board. So that being said, Madam Chair, I'm just going to yield. I made my two points. I just wanted to make sure, was that enough in there? And Madam Carthen or Commissioner Mitchell, y'all weigh in as well. I, I'd just like to know how we would fit in what we heard today. I yield, thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair? Okay, Commissioner Guyder?
Yes. It seems like the bucket's already overflowed and did in category two. But why do we have to have the categories when we've got this list by department? Why don't we just put the money in one bucket? And as the departments have to have something just related to the COVID-19 virus, why wouldn't it just come out of the one bucket? Because right, right now, we're already talking about, one bucket's already spent if the S, the CSB is approved. So, but also, part of this resolution is the hazard pay. Mark, would you please explain what the hazard pay is and who it was supposed to go to? Because it's increased since last, last Wednesday.
Yeah, so I talked to all department heads and elected officials that had submitted names, specific names. So for the most part, it decreased and then it increased for two departments. The clerk of court and the solicitor. But the total, so what we're looking at was proposed is $200 per pay period as hazard pay for all frontline employees. Frontline employees are those who come in direct contact with the public and are unable to do their job while social distancing. So based on number of employees, that's 118,846 dollars per pay period. So we're looking at a little over eight pay periods. This, I mean, excuse me, four pay periods, which is eight weeks that is proposed. So the total cost would be 534,807 dollars.
I know, I think Carroll County was doing theirs this week. A lot less employees, I think. But I'm looking at this list and I don't understand, a lot of these people do not come in direct contact with the public. They're behind glass windows. And I do notice that the probate judge, his office is not on this list. And one of their, their employees said, well, we're behind glass windows. We don't come in contact with them. I don't understand a lot of these, the, the people on this list. I know there's about three that don't, haven't done any work. One person is, is already let go or, or left the county. And the other one just hasn't worked for, for, since January. So are you still vetting this list? It's kind of a slap in the face of the first front, the frontline employees that actually come in contact, that work with the, the people that are sick or that transport the people that are sick. But when you're behind glass windows, I don't understand this. So what is the interpretation of personal contact?
So there's a lot of people that work behind glass windows that are receiving payments. They're receiving debit cards, credit cards, paperwork. So, and all these are ways that can spread the COVID-19.
That's why we have the head tech sanitizer. We all go to the grocery store and we buy groceries and we pass money back and forth. We go to the pharmacist, we pass money back and forth. To me, that does not qualify. Now, if you're up front and you don't have a glass window in front of you, I can see that you, you are frontline, you are frontline employees. But this just seems like somebody's said, oh, this is a good opportunity. But some people in the courthouse are not working in the courthouse. Some people, the, the, their departments are actually closed. And I don't understand just passing, um, money back and forth when you can have hand sanitizer between each person. But as far as the paperwork, good grief, um, this has gotten way out of hand, uh, way out of hand. And it's a slap in the face for those that truly put their lives on, uh, in jeopardy by being on the front line. I, I think a lot of these people got carried away. Uh, I thought you were gonna vet it. I thought the HR department was gonna vet it.
So I did vet it.
You're just taking them at their word.
No, ma'am. I discussed it. I discussed it extensively with everybody on this list. Um, so which department are you saying is closed and they're not working?
I'm saying they're behind, they're behind windows. They're not working with the public. They're behind windows doing bookwork. What about when the tag office, when those people come back and they start doing paperwork from all the dealers all around the county? Are we going to pay them too?
So that'd be up to the board. Currently, we didn't receive any.
They're not on this list. The probate judge decided his employees were not in danger. So his, uh, because they're behind closed, uh, glass window, he didn't submit anybody. You've got.
Correct.
You got the coroner. The coroner, he, she's got four employees, but only one of them's been doing the work. And, and that's from their own reports.
That would be worst case scenario on the four. Those would be prorated on the amount of work.
Well, one has it worked since January. So that's not part of this, this time period. And the other one was an office worker. And he's been gone, it says, um, for about two or three weeks. So I don't understand that. And, and then the coroner herself has not gone out on any of the calls. Her chief deputy's doing all the work. She's had two, uh, two calls during this pay period, this time period that we're talking about. And they go to the hospitals where the hos, the doctors pronounced the death. So why are we paying, we're just giving people money just because they're asking for it?
So, Mr. Guyder, um, if they have not worked from May sixteenth, or actually March sixteenth, excuse me, until now, they would not receive any hazard pay.
But why did they haven't gone out on any calls or something?
Then they would not receive.
They haven't come in contact with anybody.
Then they would not receive hazard pay.
But they're on this list.
Yes, they are, because there is a possibility that they would in the next couple of weeks. This would extend all the way to the May second through fifteenth, uh, pay period.
All right. Let me repeat this. Um, one of the deputies has not done work for the county since January, the end of January. We just got that report from the finance department. The chief deputy coroner is doing all of the work. He is making six to seven thousand dollars a month because he is doing all of the work. The coroner has answered two calls from hospitals. One of them was an inpatient that, I don't even know why she went to that or, or even talked to the hospital about that. But the doctor pronounced those two. She didn't, she didn't come into any contact with any bodies. Um, and then the office manager or the office assistant, part-time, he didn't, he didn't come in contact with any bodies. I don't understand. But I, he, I'm, the coroner, I'm not picking on just the coroner. I'm just giving them, um, as an example. But even some of these office workers that are working behind the, the, uh, glass windows, just because they're handling paper, we all do that. We're all doing that. And I don't understand why this list got to be so long. Even, I even questioned the dispatchers. They don't come in direct contact with the people. They're over the telephone. I know it's a stressful job, but I know, they know it's a stressful job. But, um, I just question this list in its entirety because we're just giving people money because, I guess, because we've got so much extra money laying around. I don't understand. But getting back to the buckets, I would suggest we just put, have one bucket and then assign it, uh, in accordance to the, um, uh, department that it is, uh, suspended on. So with that, I yield back.
Thank you so much, uh, Commissioner Guyder. I certainly don't want to get into weeds about the hazardous pay. However, uh, we follow the same, uh, framework as a lot of our counterparts, such as Carroll County, which everybody speaks so highly of all the time. We utilize their framework and the, and, and they did approve their, um, hazardous pay for their employees. And that information is public. There's a newspaper article out there. So it, it might have caught some of those one-offs that you have concerns about. And also Augusta, uh, is paying for the dispatchers. I said also, not only frontline, but first responders and our dispatchers are first responders. I thought we had worked out all the details last week. The information you have, again, is in the weeds. The Board of Commissioners are, will be appropriating a, a certain amount of money to allow me to provide, um, the support to our hazardous, uh, hazardous pay to our employees. And then also for our community service board, our businesses, all those things. So one bundle package. Uh, again, I, we're going to keep up with the money. I just need the approval to move forward. Uh, I know you looked at the list, those two departments that Mark said he worked with, which is, uh, the, um, Solicitor's Office and also our Clerk of Court. They've been mandated to work by Judge Melton, who's the state judge. So those offices could not close. There's a lot of traffic still coming in. The courthouse is the, I mean, the courts are the only areas that are not closed. So they still have a lot of traffic coming through. So you may want to question those two elected officials, but I had to take their word and listen to them. They got some, uh, not only does the solicitor, solicitor have people coming through her office, but she also has, uh, investigators that go out to houses and homes. So we did scrutinize the list. Our, our, uh, departments that Mark controlled, they did, we did minimize those and, and crunch some numbers. And then we were able to decrease those numbers significantly. Uh, but of course, we have two departments that you have a question mark on. We've talked to those two elected officials and they said their staff is being exposed to COVID nineteen potentially. So I don't want to try to apples to apples and oranges to oranges. We want to move forward and I'm hoping that the Board of Commissioners will approve this appropriation request for me as we go forward.
What do you do about the part that the, uh, CSB has already surpassed the bucket that they come out of?
Commissioner, I was going to ask Commissioner Carthon. I know she worked on the various buckets. And the one that says three twenty-five would be utilized for health stability needs, such as testing kits, testing site facilities, equipment, and cleaning supply services. It may be an opportunity because we have all the testing kits. I serve on the Board of Health. I'm one of the Board of Directors for that. And we have a lot, we have plenty of money in the budget, as we've stated on numerous occasions, for our testing kits. So there may be an opportunity for me to shift some dollars, uh, from that bucket. As Commissioner Robinson said, it'll be one large appropriation to give me some leverage so I can move back and forth, not to, because everything is, you know, it's, it's, it's not set in stone. It would allow to give me some, um, some leverage to move.
Well, I, I'd just suggest that it be by department rather than one bucket. And I yield back.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other concerns or questions from the Board of Commissioners about this resolution? Okay. Vice Chairman Robson, you look like, okay, uh, Commissioner Mitchell, I see you.
Okay, okay.
I don't see you yet.
I'm sorry. My apologies. Okay. Just, just a couple of questions. I, 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 I kind of concur somewhat with Commissioner Guyder. Um, my first question is, within the buckets, Mark, this may be a question for you or, or you, Madam Chair, within the buckets, always saying there is going to be hazardous pay in the four buckets that I think, um, Ms. Carthon came up with.
Yes.
Yep. Well, currently, there's three buckets. First responders and frontline hazard pay, five hundred and thirty-five thousand. Uh, community stability needs, which is for seniors, youth, homeless, transient families, CSB, uh, businesses, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Health stability needs, which is testing kits, facilities, equipment, cleaning supplies, services, three hundred and twenty-five thousand is currently what's proposed in this resolution.
Right. Okay, okay. And, and as, um, always, my concern has always been, you know, not that they don't need it or even deserve it, is the hazardous pay versus the hazardous need. I think we could, if we could stay away from what I call pay, uh, the pay and stay closer to the needs, the masks, the gloves, the, the, the kits, and, and, and all those items would be ideal, I think. And then we won't have to worry about something that, let me say, guys, because I've been doing a lot of research and I know probably all the other commissioners have been doing the same, that this hazardous pay, we will not, we will not, uh, get that, those funds from any state, federal, or any type of fine grant or whatever. That will not come back to us. However, for all those that we do that help within the community of masks, that all of Douglas County get masks, uh, gloves, uh, kits to get tested and so on. All of those items are definite, uh, possibility of getting grants and being refunded. And the list, speaking to what Commissioner Guyder spoke of, the list is a little interesting, to say the least. And that's, I think, the concern of mine as well, is how do we take this list and, and be, and be honest about it? I just, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with that side of it. Even though I've talked to a few that said, preferably, I'd like to restructure my staff and how they operate versus taking on a hazardous pay. That we will not get any refunds on this. The guys, just make sure we get it clear. Our budget is already struggling. Our budget is already, we, we in trouble already. But yet still, we want to look at, I mean, any other addition to adding an expense or taking funds to this budget. It's going to be a problem. And I hope we are all ready to understand, uh, as I said this many years ago, when we did the twenty-three percent, at least I didn't agree with the twenty-three percent increase, that that's the only way out of this. It's going to be now putting this back on the backs of the public and that will be with the military increase. I hope that's not where we're going with this. I hope that's not where we're going. But the list, I, I think we need to remove the list, take that bucket away and look at the needs as a needs assessment and go from there, though. I'll yield, but I may have some other questions, but I'll, I'll yield at that point for right now. And I, I, I would love to hear from, uh, I mean, Torino, to make sure that we are clear with the list of what we got in the buckets that we have, though. So, but outside of that, I'll yield.
Okay. Thank you so much. Yes, Commissioner Carthon. Yes.
Okay. So, uh, one of the reasons that the resolution was crafted is because I was thinking about us going forward, like what the plan would be and what we would need, right? So, um, I understand the presentations that came before us today. Um, I kind of gave room for those, not, not knowing that they would, but just kind of anticipating that they would. And it just so happens that, of course, they came. Uh, but we got to think about as a county, what it will take to get us back to our operating state. So my request for, uh, um, Director Teal, my request for you, Madam Chair, is to look at this in its totality. What will it take going forward? Our plan going forward to move us in the direction to open that courthouse back up? So when I say testing kits, I'm not just talking about testing for COVID nineteen. I'm talking about testing for antibodies. I'm talking about what a trace and treatment plan would look like. And I know you have to get with public health to do that, but not just public health, right? We just can't, you know, put all our eggs in one basket for public health. That's why I asked, uh, Ray Lightford about helping us with this. So also, um, maybe having to, uh, go with private labs in order for us to facilitate what our testing will look like. Um, so, so it's, it's not just a, 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 just a testing for COVID nineteen. It's all of that. Because eventually, we got to open this place back up so that we won't be in such, um, um, a disarray, right? Again, I keep saying it. The only way that this government takes in dollars is through sales tax and through property tax. Those, those are our only two buckets, right? So that means we may have to cut services. We may have to cut employees. I hope we don't. I, I, you know, I, I would hope that's not what we have to anticipate doing. However, we may just need to look at what comes back from the Finance Committee and see where we will cut and what we can give to. If our cap is a million dollars, if, if the Finance Committee comes back and says, look, Douglas County, you all may not get any money back from FEMA or the grants or, or, or ARC or, or any of that. This is what it will look like for you to take a hit, right? So we need to look at if we can even do any of it. But this is the proposal that's on the plate. When the Finance Committee comes back and gives us hopefully their, their committee, um, a recommendation tomorrow, then I, I'm assuming that you, Chairman Jones, and you, um, Director Teal will be able to say, okay, this is what y'all gave us to do. This is what we can realistically do. And now we can move forward. So, uh, that's what I have to say about that. It, 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 it is appropriation, but it's also within, um, you know, within bounds realistically, because we don't have a lot of money. We, 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 we know that we are going to take a hit, right? The government, um, the state government has already said we're going to take a hit. What they can even appropriate to us is going to take a hit because they're taking a hit on, on a state level. So, uh, everybody's taking a hit. So we know that we have to appropriate accordingly. We have to be conservative. Again, um, I don't spend my own money haphazardly, so I'm not going to spend the county's money haphazardly. I'm very conservative. Y'all know, I've drive the same car. My car is as old as my children, twenty and eighteen years old. My cars are old. Even though I could go out and buy another car, I won't, right? So even though we can do certain things, we need to realistically look at, is it necessary and how do we accomplish it? And in what means, and, and, um, when I say means, appropriating means to accomplish those goals. So with that, Madam Chair, you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Tomorrow, uh, this evening at two o'clock, something that you just stated regarding the, how we're going to reopen. I will be addressed in testing, tracing, and treatment, and also as we trans, uh, transition back into the workforce. So that was, that's listed on a document that I provided to the, uh, to our Finance Committee. So we'll, I have a little spread that's out there. I call it a worksheet, some of those things that will incorporate, uh, uh, maneuvering back into opening, uh, Douglas County up. So those things are under consideration, but I appreciate you, uh, mentioning those items. Um, again, the hazardous pay is, as, it was my impression today when we come, when we, um, the reason why we deferred the meeting on Wednesday is so we could talk about adding hazardous pay into the litany of things that had been presented already with the resolution. And that's what I was under impression. And I'm hoping that's, it still stands, certainly because Mark has had an opportunity to integrate that in our resolution uh, for that hazardous pay. Uh, do we agree on every person that's in there, but it's two areas, uh, Commissioner? Again, like I said, I could be willing to bring those two, uh, elected officials to both of our offices and you can question them one by one. But we've taken the time to do that. They said they feel that their employees are exposed. So I didn't want to just keep challenging, but I would certainly go back to the table and do that. The other, uh, the first responders are primarily, if you look at the list, they're primarily first responders. So, um, again, that was my impression today when we came back, that we would just include hazardous pay and make this whole thing comprehensive, not just, now all of a sudden, uh, we want to just remove hazardous pay. That's, that, that's not what I was, um, my impression uh, when we left our meeting on Wednesday. So with that being said, um, Mark Teal, are you finished with your presentation? Are you complete? Okay. Uh, any other comments? And I'm going to move on to the next item. All right. Um, I don't think we have the capability to go into executive session at this point, do we, from a virtual standpoint? Um, County Administrator, before I even call.
Okay. So Madam Chair, here's what we're going to do. So everybody needs to, as far as Commissioners go, you need to keep your computers up, keep Microsoft Teams on. So once you go out of, into executive session through this meeting, uh, Jessica and I are going to start calling everybody into executive session. So you'll get a phone call on your screen at the end of executive session. We're going to bring TJ online. Uh, and then we will stream the, uh, remainder of the Board of Commissioners meeting, just like we always do.
Okay. Thank you so much. Attorney Bernard, do we need to go into executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, we need to go into executive session for litigation and real estate.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. You got a motion, so I gotta wait.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate and state your name by saying yes. Or Chairman Jones, yes.
Henry Mitchell, yes.
Torina Carthon, yes.
Ann Jones-Guyer, yes.
And Kelly Robinson, I believe you said yes to, right?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
All right, so I guess.
Before you, you close this and shift, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
All right, I, I got cut off whatever reading technologically, so I, I missed part of Madam Carthon's articulation, but I caught her passion at the end. So how do we close this out in that we want to resolve it? Is it, what, what is your, what is your request? You want to finalize this in committee and come back tomorrow with the final and take it into consideration? I mean, what is the takeaway? How did you leave it? I'm sorry, I just, I have to ask.
Commissioner Carthon?
Yes, I think it would be best that we totally look at the finances. I think Commissioner Guyer has made that point, Commissioner Mitchell. I think we all need to really know what the numbers are. So I would love it if we could get a recommendation from the Finance Committee as to what that total amount will be, so that Chairman Jones and Director Teal can do what they need to do in order to move us along.
Got it, thank you, Madam Chair, I'm clear.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, all right, so we'll wait on our phone calls. Mark, is that what we need to do?
He's having a phone call.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think we're gonna hang up and y'all stand by on your, on your computers and you'll get a call back.
Okay, thank you.
So everybody drop off.
Everybody hang up, yes, sir.
Just, I don't want to hang up.
All right, thank you. We will resume our work session. Commissioner Carthon, I believe you have a question for us, before I end the meeting.
Yes, my question was for Attorney Bernard in regards to hazard pay. We don't have a hazard pay ordinance. And I know that we did have a 2009 flood. So I was wondering how did we handle hazard pay during that event? And do we need to have a hazardous pay ordinance in order to ensure that we are in compliance with asking for these funds possibly back?
So I can answer that, Commissioner Carthon. So we have never paid hazard pay, not to my knowledge. And so from talking with Jason Milhahn and Gima and FEMA, as far as getting reimbursed, the current situation is, if we issue hazard pay, we cannot be reimbursed because we did not have a hazard pay ordinance in place when the emergency declaration was made. And you can't, you can't do it after the fact.
Okay.
No, we don't have a hazard pay ordinance and we've never issued hazard pay. This is the first time it's ever come up.
So it would be my recommendation then that we get one in place. This hopefully will be the last hazard that we ever have, but just in case, we as a county definitely need to have that, have that in, in place. So we know that given these five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, we won't be reimbursed for this. So we want to make sure that we make that clear to, to the, to the public and to every Commissioner on this call in, in regards to that. And, and so with that being said, I would hope that Chairman Jones and, and you, Mark, would go back and really, again, look at who needs to get it. Because I think a lot of the counties that I have been looking at, that I looked at over the weekend, they really only gave it to the first responders, the sheriffs, and, and a couple of the, the crew engineers, not engineers, landfill workers. So I can't tell you who is or who isn't being impacted by it, but if we can give those departments who feel like they really need something, if we could give them, I don't know, to, you know, the necessary masks, necessary gloves, necessary hand sanitizer, those things to help mitigate their exposure to it, I think would be better. We just want to make sure that, you know, again, we, we don't have unlimited funds. So hopefully, this number can come down. Again, we will await to see what the Finance Committee comes back with. And hopefully, that will, you know, help us to make a decision, an informed decision tomorrow in regards to hazard pay, the community service needs, and the health need for the county. With that, Madam Chair, you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthon. Yes.
Chair, so Jason Milhahn and Chief Spencer, they've been working with, with Gima and all different agencies on getting any kind of suits, gloves, M95 masks, face, you know, face shields. And we're having trouble supplying enough just for public safety right now. So those would be the first ones on the list.
Right, right. Let me just add also, Mark, to the five hundred and, whatever the number, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, we said that all of that would not hit the general fund. Is that what you said? You had, the other day, you carved out the various areas, such as the landfill, which is the enterprise fund. I know it's all, it's all potatoes, potatoes. I see your head.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. So four hundred and twenty-five thousand would be for the general fund. The uneaked fund, six thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. Enterprise fund, four thousand eight hundred and forty-seven. E911 fund, thirty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three. Fire EMS fund, sixty-four thousand nine hundred and thirteen. And animal control fund, one thousand nine hundred and forty.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't forget lose sight of that. Those various buckets that we already looked at in advance. Certainly because that five, thirty-five, just it, it raises everybody's eyebrows. So I just wanted to make sure we had that discussion as well. Okay, Board of Commissioners, if there's nothing else to come before us, certainly, this meeting is adjourned, and thank you.
Thank you. Right.